Let's start the council meeting, please cause to order. Ken?
Alrighty, council member Budishevsky not here. Council member Cummings?
Here.
Council member Kaiser?
Here.
Council member LaRoche?
Here.
Council member Parsons?
Here.
Mayor Adams?
Here.
Council member Banks?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, let's rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God in this bill with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an agenda before us, looking for a motion on that agenda. Go ahead Nancy.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you Brendan, I second that. All right, all members in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Full say aye. Motion carries. All right. With that, real quickly, I'm gonna make some quick introductions. My name is Jim Adams, I'm the mayor of Crystal. I'd like to have each council member go ahead and introduce themselves to you. I've been on the council for ten years at this point. Let's go in the order that we're gonna ask questions.
All right, I'm Brendan Banks and I've been on the council for four years.
I'm Trace Kaiser, I've been on the council for four years.
Hi, I'm Nancy LaRoche, I've been on the council since two thousand sixteen, here for serving my sixth year.
I'm Olga Parsons, I've been on the council for eight years, for two terms. And that's that. Right, do we do, I'm north half of Crystal section, section two.
Okay, yeah, that's cool.
I'm David Cummings, this is my second year on the Crystal City Council.
Great, all right, thank you guys. So we have thirteen questions and we'll go through them kind of one at a time and I'll start. First of all, we want you to please tell us what interests you about this position and highlight key qualifications that make you the best person for the job.
Okay, well, the reason I'm interested in Crystal. I've spent ten years as a city administrator, I've been in a small community, I've been in what I would call, well, I would be in a little bit larger community and then what I'm looking for for my career is a community that I can, what I would call is a capstone or a pinnacle position and I believe Crystal can be that. I'm, the reason I say that is because Crystal is the size of community that I think will challenge me and keep me up. I'm somebody that thrives off a challenge and thrives on different things, so I really enjoy the opportunities that a larger community can provide. And I think Crystal, because of its location, is in a really good spot personally for me, because I have family here in the area that will allow me to, you know, really connect and get involved in the community along with quite, I go, I go to the northern, northern central part of the state quite frequently for recreation and ice fishing and fishing in the summer and stuff. So I think it's a really great opportunity just being the location that Crystal is in. I think Crystal's got a lot of things good going for it and I think that's one of those things that can be a opportunity. As far as qualifications, I've been a police officer for thirteen years. I was a Iowa law enforcement instructor for a few years and decided that with my, I went and got back, got my master's degree in public administration while I was at, in law enforcement, with the intent to kind of move up the chain that way. There, there was a, I guess I would call it a logjam as far as promotional process and it looked like because of the timing, there wasn't really gonna be an opportunity for me to get promoted for a number of years. So I took an opportunity to become an instructor at the law enforcement academy, which was something that was very repetitive and I decided I didn't really like that process. So that's what got me interested in city government and becoming a city administrator. And so I left law enforcement and became a city administrator and quite frankly, I haven't, haven't looked back since, enjoyed it. Enjoy the challenges and the changes and communication with the people.
All right, thank you.
All right, second question, describe how you would build trust with the city council and staff.
You're gonna hear me talk about communication a lot. To me, I, I want to communicate, I want to be as available to council and I want to be as available to my staff as poss, as much as possible. I, I, my leadership style per se is actually leadership by availability. I'm not gonna sit in my office and say, I've got an open door policy, you come talk to me whatever you want. Well, that's my, you know, my office that becomes essentially my domain per se, I'm the, you know, I'm the, I'm the king in my domain, I guess. I want to go to them and I want to go and meet and sit and talk with each and every one of you to be available. And it doesn't have to be in an office, we can go have a cup of coffee and have a discussion about whatever is concerning you or however, so that we can be, at, at, you know, everybody's at an equal level at that point to me, so that we can have a good, open and honest communication. The, the, one of the things, or two things that are, I hold most important to me is my honesty and my integrity. You're never gonna catch me in a lie because I'm not gonna do it. And I want you to understand that what I'm telling you and what I'm working towards is for the betterment of the community. I'm, I'm, I use kind of the analogy before, people that don't tell you the truth always have to remember what they said because two hours later they can, they'll have to remember that. I'm usually not smart enough to remember that far back, so that's why I, I don't want to worry about that. So communication and us having a face-to-face communication all the time and being upfront and honest.
Describe a time when you made a mistake at work, how did you deal with this situation and what was the outcome?
The one communicate, or one of the mistakes, I guess, I mean, I make mistakes every day, but one, one of the things that I, I kind of wish I would have done a little bit differently in Fairfield is, is we've been, we've been having a negotiation with our dispatch center, with the county for the last three or four years. It's been, not been a pleasant discussion either, it's because it's over finances and then who's gonna run the dispatch. I wish I would have gone to each entity involved a little bit more and kind of tried to communicate what the city's position was to try and have each small entity in the county along with the county, understand more where we were and, and that would have allowed me to kind of understand the political, political side of where they're all coming from. And we're getting to the point here, we actually had a change in supervisors that'll change in, in January and I think we're gonna get somewhere because we've got, we've had two supervisors that have got their heels dug into ground and I've got two city council members with their, their heels dug into the ground in the middle of this negotiation and I think we're gonna be able to get to a point with the new supervisor and we'll probably try and make some changes with the council to where we can come with a fresh look and come to a very, a better agreement than what we're sitting at now. So the outcome, it's, it's drawn out the outcome and I wish it wouldn't, I, it's created some hardships and some hard feelings and I don't like that. I would have liked that to be a little bit better.
And this is question number four, how would you reach or serve diverse groups or traditionally underserved populations within our community?
Well, I think the neat thing about Fairfield is Fairfield is the home of Maharishi University. I don't think anybody familiar with Maharishi University? Maharishi University is based on transcendental meditation and it brings in, it actually, their biggest component is a computer engineering degree, but they bring in people from eighty different countries. So we as a community in Fairfield have brought in people and actually transcendental meditation folks come from the east coast, the west coast and have, on the Fairfield, so we have a very diverse community along with the students that we work with, so it's, it's very important to be open and honest and communicate and listen to all these different groups and to get their opinions. I, I, I saw that your diversity, equity and inclusion committee has just kicked off next month or last month and so I'm, I'm kind of excited to have an opportunity to get involved with that and then listen and hear what our community or what the city of Crystal has for needs and what each of our underserved communities have and can bring and so we could, what we can do for our community.
Thank you.
Question number five, describe your experience working collaboratively with other units of government and how building these types of relationships benefited the community that you have worked for?
Well, we talked a little bit about our dispatch center. But we also work with our county in Fairfield, there's really, the, the community, the city and the county is, the population for the entire county is about sixteen thousand people, the city of Fairfield is almost ten. So, and then there's about five or six small communities in there, so it's, we work with the county a lot, we share a law enforcement center, our police department and our county share a law enforcement center, so we have to communicate and we have to be willing to work and give and take. I, I don't know, that's not, shouldn't take, but I mean, it's, it's a give and take so that we all work together to become a good working unit. So our, we, we actually share a building where our, the county health nurse and our fire department work together and that actually department act, or that sharing actually works very well to where we just work together and there's really not a lot of issues. So again, it goes back to, again, going back to communicating, putting our opportunities and our, our, a lot of times our personalities aside that we can do what's best for the community and building, building that opportunity that's best for our city while we're also building what's best for our community or county.
Okay, question six, in your current or previous role, what is the most difficult decision you have made and how did you come to that decision?
What is the most difficult decision? Change is always a difficult thing, especially in, in, in a community that's had things the way they've had it for years. This last, little over, a little about a year ago, we had a opportunity where our city, our fire chief, who was a part-time fire chief and he was also a part-time code enforcement officer. He resigned and went to another community where he's actually now just the fire chief. So my decision process was, is okay, how do I handle replacing a fire chief and a code enforcement officer? It becomes a bigger, bigger discussion because the city of Fairfield doesn't have any code whatsoever, other than zoning code. And so enforcing nuisances and enforcing building code is very difficult and quite honestly, we've had a lot of blighted stuff going on. So my, my decision was, is we're going to implement a code, a code compliance officer as a full-time position and then we, because our fire department is mostly volunteer, well, part paid, part-time. My fire chief is now a paid part-time fire chief. And so the, the community are, is perfect, we're okay and, and I quite, our fire department has done very well. The full-time code compliance officer is, is a transition in, because now we're being more proactive with our nuisances and code enforcement and he's still working towards building, uh, building code and stuff like that so that we can enforce that too. So the community's not necessarily used to having nuisances enforced as aggressively or as it is, so, but it's really going to clean our community up, which is very, very needed.
So number seven, next question, describe a situation that you feel demonstrates your integrity and ethical standards.
Well, I, I'll go back to our dispatch conversation. I have sat down and I've put together numbers and to try and show the imbalance with the costs, where the city is paying an disproportionate cost to the county and trying to explain and work with them to get to those numbers. And they, they've been a little bit upset because those changes and the numbers have changed over the number last couple of years and the reason they've changed is because a lot of the billing goes through the county, so I have to get those numbers and information from them. So when I started off, I was using estimates and then as we went through that process, I was starting to get more and more specific numbers so that I could show them. So the integrity side of this is, is I can, they, they were questioning my numbers and so I wanted to make sure and explain to them where I came with those numbers and how I did that and why we were going down this road. And so using my, I guess, from my perspective again, being very forthright with how I came up with things and being direct and saying, we're not trying to say you're not paying anything or paying your, paying, we just think this needs to be more equitable between us and you.
My turn?
Yep.
All right. All right, now question number eight, what have you done in your current position or previous positions that made a significant difference to the organization?
Well, in the city of Fairfield's, a good example with the city of Fairfield, when I got there, our bonding rating was a B, something pretty poor bonding rating when I got there. So we have a lot of financial policies and procedures put in place to where our fiscal response, fiscal stability for our community has tremendously improved over the last five years. And that's because we're building, building cash reserves to where we have enough money to, like, like, just like here, with you, you have forty-two percent, I think, of your general fund where you can cover taxes, just like what the auditors are recommending to you, we have the set, very similar. We're building that, that base so that we have cash reserves and we can protect ourselves from instances of downturns or tax dollars not just coming in for some reason or another. We've, we've changed in the last five years to where I've also invested some of our cash reserves so that we're making our dollars work for us and we can use some of those dollars now to do projects rather than, again, borrowing from like we have in the past. The city, the city of Iowa, it makes it more difficult to build cash balances to where you don't borrow. But we've been able to build some things and we're actually, we're not quite to an A, triple A rating with Moody's now, but we've moved back up into the A rating to where our bonding is, or our, our rating is much, 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 much better.
Can I dig, dig a little deeper?
Yeah, absolutely.
When you, when you say how investing, the, in your, in your example, you're saying investing, what, what do you, you do?
What, what do I, what we do?
What did you do, yes?
We, we, this, we're not allowed to invest like in stocks and bonds or anything like that, but we, we, we were not taking our, our cash balances and putting it in CDs with the banks or local banks or anything like that. So what I've done is we, I've taken chunks of money that I'm almost, that I shouldn't say almost, I know that we aren't gonna need in a year and I've put it out to bid to all of our local banks, so where now we're, we're, we're getting CD rates from our local banks to where they are, A, they're borrowing money from us, or they have that cash from us and they don't have to borrow it. And so they're saving a little bit of money by giving us a good interest rate, but they're also not borrowing from the federal home loan bank out of Des Moines to where now they're keeping that money in the community and we're benefiting the community in general. So that, well, with, with the interest rates up until this last year, some of it wasn't, I mean, the first time we did it, we actually did pretty well, but then this last, the, the last year, our interest rates were very good, but now our interest rates are back up again, so we're doing pretty well with our interest and investments. So, you know, when, when you invest four million dollars and you can bring in a couple hundred thousand dollars and, and in interest, I mean, that's something that you can actually do something with, or if you put it away and then put it to something else, it starts to mean you can invest in projects that can be a significant impact to your community.
Thank you.
Number nine, if you are hired for this position and are still with the organization five years from now, how do you think the organization will be different?
It's, that's a difficult question to answer because I don't know what I don't know yet. When I come in, I anticipate listening and doing a lot of, how am I, how is the organization working? What are the things going on? So I'm gonna ask a lot of questions like, why are we doing it this way? Why do we do that? And I hope I don't get a lot of, well, that's just the way we've always done it. That's not usually a very great answer for me. So as I go through that process of understanding how we're doing things, then it's, then it's my job to come in and make recommendations as far as be that fresh set of eyes and say, okay, you've been doing it this way. Let's, let's take this approach and see how we can do things differently. I see a lot of growth from me personally as a, as a city administrator or city manager and giving a fresh set of eyes to the city of Crystal. Not to say that you are doing things wrong or not to say that you're doing things bad, but I think I can give you a fresh set of eyes and maybe give you another avenue in some things. I'm, I, you know, like I said, I just don't know what I don't know yet, so I can't give you a great definitive answer, but in five years, I really want to be sitting here looking at you going, look at the great things that we've been able to accomplish over the last five years.
And this is question number ten, provide an example of how you have been a change agent in your organization.
Well, we kind of talked about it now, we've talked about kind of how we handled some of our investment or how we handled some of the cash on hand. We've talked about the dispatch center where I think we're finally gonna get to a point because of the change in people to where we can get a more equitable and a more reasonable situation. And, and what it boils down to is I like to sit and look at how we're doing things. The, the example with the dispatch center, I was looking at, okay, we are paying for all of the personnel for the dispatch center. So with six employees as a dispatch center and all their benefits, all, actually seven, you know, that was becoming a five, six, seven hundred thousand dollar a year input. Whereas the equipment side where the, where the county was inputting was a pretty stagnant couple hundred grand. Well, that's not necessarily a balance and equity, so looking at the whole picture, trying to find out how things are going and listening to what my department heads say, give me an idea how things should change and give me how that opportunity is to where we can do a better job. I, I'm very much a guy that likes to listen to what my experts and the department heads are experts in their field. I listen to them and ask them questions and give, give the best educated decision that I can possibly make. Just like I listen to the council as far as the council's decisions and policy and willing to listen to their questions and answers and then give a good marriage, I think, quite honestly, between council decision and administration of those policies to where we can work together and be a good facility or a good economic team or a good team all in general.
Okay. All right. Question eleven, provide an example of a time when you were proactive in solving a small problem before it turned into a major problem.
I'm a big proponent of getting people in the right positions also. I don't like, I, I, at times I, you don't, you know, it, it comes from the book Good to Great and using people, if, if they're not necessarily a good fit in one position, maybe they can be a good fit in another. So there was a position that was just, she, she, she wanted to be more in control than what she really, what her position was. So before there was a lot of change or a lot of consternation with the other two people she worked with, it was a good time to sit down and communicate with her, maybe this position would be better where you're actually kind of running this department and, and not necessarily running the department, but being, being the organizer for these things, which it happens to be our rental inspection program, so I, so let's, let's put you in this position to where you are being the organization person that, that you really do a good job of and you're not ruffling the feathers of some of these other people so that we can kind of, before we have a lot of employee problems, is kind of what it ended up being. So it was moving somebody from one position to another without really disciplining them or actually giving them an opportunity to, or before it got to a problem and giving everybody an opportunity to have more of a successful situation.
Okay, question twelve, why should the Crystal City Council select you as their next city manager?
Well, I, I don't know the other two, I, I got a chance to talk to Mark, but I don't know them, I don't know your other two candidates. I am a team builder. I, I have, quite frankly, I have one of, my, my biggest success in Fairfield right now has been building the team that we have and building trust in between everybody that we've, that I work with within the departments and having a great administrative team and along with my, all of my department heads. We, we built a lot of trust in each other, we've worked to become a very efficient team where we are providing services to our community at a efficient level, where we're not breaking the bank with everything, but yet we're providing service at a, at a good level with the dollars that we have available to us. We're, we're very, we're very efficient, but yet we do provide very good service. And we have great trust in each other. I, I enjoy our team that we're working with.
All right. So next is question thirteen, last question.
Lucky number thirteen.
Yep, you got it. And I'll just read it, how's that?
Okay.
Do you have any questions for us?
I do, I can come up with, the department heads, they asked the same question, I said, oh, I will, I can come up with all.
All right.
The light rail system. Where are we, what is our position as the council? How is that going?
I'll take that on, I'll at least start. We as a council are divided, I would say. We've, we are operating a place of, or at least, let me speak for myself on this one. I'm operating from a place of distrust with some of our partners. Primarily the project management group, we've, we've, we are on our second alignment right now in terms of where the rail's gonna go. And in the scope of that alignment, there were some promises and some things that were supposed to happen, which at the end did not happen. And in the second alignment, we've tried to ask for some other things and from my perspective, a good faith effort has not been made by the project office to accommodate those, that, and of course, the project office is managed by the Met Council, which is another, another layer. Are you familiar with Met Council?
I've, I've heard it, I've heard the term, I think I listened to you on your podcast, talk about it a little bit.
Sure. So, so that, that, that layer is, is just an additional govern, governance and that's what's really promoting. And, and at the end of the day, it is a regional project. It isn't a city project. Uh, I also have a perspective from, uh, a, a city, when we, when we affirm an alignment or affirm the project, uh, we have three pathways to yes. One is yes, the other is no, but this is what we're going to need to get to a yes. And the other one is not, not to have a, a vote on it, which eventually will be, be deemed as yes. So that's three yeses. So yes, we, we have to work with our other organizations and figure out how to work with them, uh, when it comes through. Uh, but there's a reality that we really, we really don't have the say at this point in time. And it, it's a matter of, of, of trying to walk through that and, and figure out how that goes. Um, there hasn't been, uh, the, the rest of the council from, from my perspective, uh, there's, there's a lot of people who really want the light rail and want to do everything to support the light rail. Uh, in fact, there's probably quite a few on this council that have that position. Um, so we, we divert there. Uh, the reality is we're going to have to come together and we're going to have to do what's best for the city of Crystal. And, and that I think that's what's going to happen. Um, so we are in a point where we're moving towards engineering. I think, I don't remember what percentage of engineering, but this is the, the, these are the moments where municipal consent is going to come forth in about one year and, and, and we'll get environmental studies coming out of that process as to, uh, what needs to be done, what doesn't need to be done. There's also other, uh, interesting dynamics to light rail in that Hennepin County has been playing a very strong, powerful role in supporting, uh, the Met Council by, uh, I, I guess granting different projects around the, the, um, the route, uh, just to make it more feasible. Um, Met Council had, or excuse me, Hennepin County has also taken on any shortcoming uh, expenses and operations. So, uh, they are definitely uh, two other organizations that are working together to make this happen. That's my perspective. Anybody got anything more to add?
All right.
I think it's definitely a, a multi-agency.
Yeah.
A pro and, and lots of very strong, strong feelings on it. So.
Yeah. Uh, I think John, John Sutter has been kind of the contact person for the city.
Yes.
Is that something that you want the next city manager to be involved in, or is that John's bailiwick to work with those other organizations?
You, you know, I think John has, I, I'm not looking to replace John in that role and, you know, and, and that's, that's really, you know, you as a city manager, I would see that as, as your prerogative to figure out how staff attend to certain meetings. I think he's got the skill, the knowledge and the ability to do just an outstanding job there.
I, I'm not saying I would, I, that's what I want to do, right?
Right, sure.
It was just a curious.
I hear you.
It, it was more of a, okay, do you want, do you need somebody to be the hammer here or? Uh, so I, doing my research with, with Crystal, um, I, I, my wife and I spent this past weekend here and we drove around a lot of the community, a lot of the neighborhoods. Um, and of course, you, you see some very nice houses and you see some not so nice houses and you see some, everything in between. Um, being a landlocked community, how does the council's economic development plan, plan for, I guess, growth for the community? Um, I guess the analogy I used earlier i- in the, in the other room was, uh, you know, I, I go by an athletic background. So you, you know, I, if, if you're not getting better, you're not, you're getting worse. Um, so what's, what's the council's goal and? Cause I think the city manager is also the economic development association liaison or member for that. Um, did I see that, right?
She's the executive director, so to speak.
Yep.
Yeah.
So.
She was.
So how's council's direction with that?
Um, we have the president of the EDA here.
As I say, I, I'll, I'll, I'll type in all that. Um, so the, the EDA is made up of, of the council, but, and then, uh, so like right now currently this last year, I'm the president of the EDA. Um, I would say, or we, you know, done things like have the town center planning and, um, and, and some of the stuff to allow the natural, you know, redevelopment, if that makes any sense. Um, where, you know, there's been some things that have been put into place to kind of help spur, you know, sprucing up the more focused on the business community. Uh, we've done things where we've re- recently redone a lot of the code as far as the council goes. Um, and, and that makes that easier for that to naturally take place as far as what citizens do, property owners do on, on their own, right? Um, I would say I don't think that we have a comprehensive economic development plan as far as from, and, and a big strategic investment, you know, thing. And, and I think when, as I've thought about things, that would be kind of, I would say, an area of, of, of opportunity. Um, more, more or less of how do you get more creative and, and what is, you know, what is coming? You know, some people could talk about, you, you have the blue line coming and whether, you know, whether we like it or not, it, it's coming. We, you know, we, it's our say in it, kind of going back to the light rail. Um, but in that area, what is it that we can do, but also taking in the position, right, that, you know, uh, these are individual property, you know, owners, right? And, um, that they, they have to move in, in that, right? We have a very, uh, low vacancy rate, you know, we have a small commercial sector. Um, so then you kind of circle back and go to, well, what can you do to get people to invest in, in, you know, and their properties? And, and we have different programs and things like that, but, um, I think that's, that's always an, an area of opportunity, if that makes any sense. And anybody can chime in if, if they feel like I, I, I've, I've missed something or.
Um, I'll, I'll take a different perspective. Uh, I think probably a, a higher viewpoint of it. Uh, we have a comprehensive plan, which is pretty much directed from that council.
Yep.
Uh, and again, here we are dealing with different government agencies. I think this council has taken a position to where they want to maintain the integrity of single family homes and kind of keep the, the neighborhoods as they are.
Yep.
Uh, but yet we're still being asked to hit these, these, uh, uh, density, uh, measurements.
Right.
And a lot of what we, excuse me, a lot of what we've done in the last 10 years is, is try to create opportunities within the neighborhoods to allow for higher density. Um, we weren't, we weren't necessarily looking for, you know, clearing a block and putting up a big high rise in that block. Um, to us, we felt that that kind of changed the dynamics for what Crystal was. Um, I don't know if that's changing in the council. I, I just know that was very strong, uh, 10 years ago, and some policy changes have been made in that realm. Uh, so what we've introduced were, uh, accessory dwelling units, allowing multiple, uh, housing families in a specific place. We've narrowed down the, you've, you've heard this in the podcast. I just realized, okay, here in the podcast, this is all.
I hope you know I did my homework.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, I had a, I had a question. I had a conversation with Mark, you know.
Wait.
You know, all this is about them. How are they going to know who we are? Well, they better know who we are. So obviously I.
You do a good job and I, you know, you have a, uh, uh, a renovation business, I think is what I understood, you know, so you're doing that in the community already, and I think that's a great thing. So, so yeah, I, I, that's just kind of, I mean, the, the easiest answer to what, to that economic development question, oh yeah, we're just going to clear this whole place and we're going to put four or five different apartment buildings and, but again, does that change the uh, the, the integrity or the, the feel of the community? And I think that's something the community needs to make a decision on. And, and I think that's, that's your role. And I think that's a great opportunity for you, you know, you guys have that feel and, you know, I, I think one of the things that the city, as a city manager, you know, you have the vote of the policies and then that's my job in, eh, to implement the policies. And if that's the direction you feel is best for the community, that's great. That's fine by me. I, I'm not, I don't have a dog in the fight there. I'll, I'll do what you guys decide is a policy and let's, let's do what's best for our community.
Oh, I just wanted to add really quick about the, the EDA. Um, w- when I first ran and I think that we have kept this kind of policy throughout the last eight years is, is not to be in the real estate business of like buying up properties. And here we're going to, you know, make money with real estate. So that's, we have stayed away from that. Uh, we have had, you know, a lot of blighted properties we've purchased and resold then as lots because of the, you know, the downturn that happened a while ago with the housing bubble. And I think we've cleared, those lots have all been cleared. We don't really have a huge.
One or two?
Yeah, right. Stock a lot, some, some kind of complicated little plots that, that really need a lot of creativity.
Yep.
So, so like Brandon said, we just, we have what we have. We are a fully developed city in the midst of this, the twin cities. And so we have to be really creative in how we, you know, add density and, um, so yeah, I, I, I really thought that staying away from real estate uh, business wa- has been a wise move for us.
Sure.
So.
So I'd like to comment on that. I got a little bit different perspective. I've been in real estate since 92. Um, and I've seen some major, major swings. And, uh, there are times in these major swings where it does make sense for cities to, to purchase some of these blighted properties. Um, you know, because, because they, they do become kind of the purchaser of last resort and, and that's really what I believe our role is. But in order to get into, fall into that position, um, you really need a dramatic swing in the economy i- in that housing market. And, and we've, we've experienced that in 2000, 2008. Um, that was just a tremendous thing that hadn't happened, you know, before in history. And that was a time when we were doing some accumulation and, and really, um, I don't know that, I, I don't know that there are, are not blighted properties out there, but I don't think there's blighted properties out there that we can afford to purchase at, at the rates that they're at. So there, there's a lot, there's a lot more to it. It's not just one dimensional.
Oh, absolutely. We, in Fairfield, we're, we're working on a pro- program where at some point there are blighted project properties where the homeowner is not wanting to do anything with it. And that's where then the city will come in and will purchase it at, or go through the court system to force the purchase and then we'll take, kind of like what you were talking about, we'll clear the lot and then we'll sell it. Not with it, without any intention of making money, but to improve the community and the look of the community. So I, I, of course, if I get the opportunity to come to Minnesota, of course, those are some of the laws I'd have to understand and learn, but I think that a- again, blighted properties is, is something that we've got to, obviously, community members involved in to, uh, improve and go forward.
Yeah, go ahead. I was, uh, I was just gonna, you know, uh, circle back as, as kind of, um, as, you know, I think about, there was a, I was fortunate, there was a lot of stuff was, a lot of the hard work was already done as far as the, the, the code had a huge comprehensive redevelopment, uh, or this kind of where they went through, cleaned it up, um, and stuff like that gave, uh, I would say not necessarily authority, but right, made things more clear. Um, a- and our code enforcement, you know, they're, 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 they're really good at, at, at what they do, right, to have, um, consistency. So there, you know, and you walk the line of, well, how much can we do as from a government standpoint to write, what is, you know, individual property rights?
Yeah.
Uh, you know, they're, they're owners. Um, and so then as, you know, and we've gotten really cool, there's been a lot of unique things that have, have come up as far as the, the gradual development of the residential piece, right? But that's one of the things that I think is, is unique to Crystal being, and not necessarily bedroom community, but that's what we are, right? Um, and so the focus then gets kind of turned back onto our commercial areas, right? We, we don't, we have one large area and then we have a couple little pockets. And so then it's been trying to get creative in that, you know, in that space of, of encouraging, you know, development there or what opportunities exist. Um, and I, I think that, I think that's where the biggest, probably the, the, the biggest opportunity uh, for, I mean, and I think we all, we all would agree because we, we often talk about, you know, as soon as, we all know when a, a business closes and we're like, all right, well, what's the next thing there? So that's good, meaning there's not that many where we're having a whole lot of questions about all of these different properties, but as soon as, we don't have stuff that sits vacant very long.
Sure.
Which is, which is good. Um, but then it's, how do you get, and I think this with the town center development deal that, you know, it's like, this is where we want to put the focus and kind of let stuff n- naturally take its course. But then I, I think we're all encouraged to help promote what, you know, how do we, how do we shop the city of Crystal? How do we sell? And, and I will tell you kind of my comment on that. We've, since I've been on, on, on the council, one of the first thing I said is we don't do a very good job at, at, we haven't historically at telling our story. You know, um, for example, just kind of with the, when I first got elected, being the first person of color to be elected in, in Crystal, the history of Crystal, right? And, a- and that was a big deal. I didn't think I was making history, right? And a lot of comments that I got from people outside of Crystal that know Crystals, how did you get elected in, in an old white town? Well, you know, my comment was, that's not who we are, right? And so that's where we changed one of our council goals, right? And, and, and looking at things and having the eyes of, right, even our publications and stuff that we send out, well, we look at it and it's, there's just a bunch of white kids on the Parks and Recreation thing, right? Well, um, we're not showing the diversity of our community. We're not showing the diversity of our, of our housing. We're not shopping that stuff. We haven't done a really good job. Histor- we've made some changes and strides over the last four years. Um, but I think that with historically, that, that has been a thing. Um, and so there, there's still plenty of opportunity there.
Yeah, uh, you know, in five minutes and, uh, just one thing, I would amplify the, the need for creativity for redevelopment and in the commercial area. We need, we need creativity. We need aggressive behavior in that realm. Just, it's, he's spot on.
Yep.
So any more questions? You got five minutes?
Well, um, I could probably go on for quite a while asking questions about strategic planning and a lot of different things. Uh, but I have greatly enjoyed coming to Crystal and being a part of checking out your community. Um, I really think that this is an opportunity for myself and my family. And I hope it would be a great opportunity for the city of Crystal to where we can, again, create that marriage to where we can move this community forward and become, again, not necessarily make it better, but I mean, well, make it better, but not that it's a bad community. It's just make it an even better community. And so I hope I get to hear, hear back in, in the positive here in the near future so that we can, uh, move forward and I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate the time and giving me the opportunity to come and talk to you all.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure meeting you as well. All right.
And so how is the relationship to the, the losing hockey team compared to the Mavericks?
Well, it's a little, they've had our number recently, so it's not so good.
I have a cousin, I have a cousin that transferred from the Mavericks.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Nice.
So.
Yeah, they've been really good. So.
Yeah, they are. I, I came from Iowa, so I don't know a whole lot about hockey. I understand a lot about.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm not a sports fan, so I mean, I'm a fan, but I'm not like.
Yeah.
People have fun. Like, save it here.
I was, I was a tiny rugby player way back when.
It was a very fun game. Yes.
Yeah.
I'm originally from Texas. I'm from all over, but yes, that's where I was before.
When you released soccer in Arlington?
I, I, I played rugby in college.
Oh. That was a sport I was, I was, that's kind of interesting.
Very European.
Yeah.
Something to do in Europe.
Football came from.
Nice meeting you.
Nice to meet you. Thank you very much. I, I think that's right. Great.
So, yes.
Well, I, I hope. I have a reason we're back this year.
But I will, I will stick your hand all day.
Be wonderful at all the steps.
Okay.
You're wondering, you know, hanging out there.
Yeah, I'm planning on staying. I heard, I stayed last night in Greensville where I have a cousin that lives there. My, my aunt lived in, uh, the Dino and maybe all of her family lived in the Dino. They, they spread out.
Test, test right there, because some people say from out of town will say Adina. So, well done.
I'm going to go back to Greensville tonight and then, uh, decide how, when and how I'm going to get them.
Oh, there you go.
All right. You're, you're not in a rush.
Well, I heard you're probably.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. It does still get a certain move around.
It does still get a certain move around.
First time I tried these ruby things.
Yeah, I can't, I can't believe it.
Our, our next one is, our next one is, we're starting market.
I've had him very.
I don't remember them. We're starting market five.
Five o'clock is the next one.
Bad, basically, I, I'm asking, do I have a bat?
Oh.
Yeah, cool.
It's not too late to return.
It's dinner time.
Do we need to continue this meeting for a minute?
Uh, well, I have next, about seven minutes. Definitely.
Oh, you're so welcome. What is this shirt that we don't have on? Wow. Nice. Oh, my gosh.
So Matt, I think what I'm going to do is continue the meeting for a few minutes, so if we, we don't need to have this part recorded, until we get a candidate coming in, I'll let you know.
People want to hear stretch on chips.
At this time, I'd like to bring the council meeting back to order. So, our next applicant here is here. Uh, we don't need introductions, so welcome, Mark. Uh, we're going to go through questionnaires. We've got thirteen questions for you. And we're just going to rotate and go through them. You answer them. Uh, you've got fifteen minutes to answer them and, um, I will start. Uh, first question is, please tell us what interests you about the position, and highlight key qualifications that make you the best person for the job.
Sounds good. Uh, one interesting to me, so I've had the privilege of serving as director of public works here in the city of Crystal for about seven and a half years. And during that time, it really started when I first started. We had a big focus on just organizations. And so we did a thing called Public Works two point O, which focused on three things, focused on building a, a, a culture of self-improvement, actual workplace, and then a commitment to public service, and just kind of reaffirming those goals internally. And so really, that, that's sort of the benchmark of some internal stuff, uh, that we work to, to build a positive culture, uh, both for our staff as well as in service. And I'm really proud of where that's come as our group has grown and developed over the years. From a project standpoint, um, we've done a lot of amazing, we are a fully built up community. Yeah, we've added, over six million gallons of stormwater storage in the city to help reduce flooding. Um, we've improved traffic signals and traffic flow through the city proactively. Um, and what that did is when gas prices were, you know, four to five dollars a gallon this past summer, because of the city's proactive efforts, we'd already done everything we could to make traffic flow as efficient as possible. So our residents and people traveling through aren't wasting money on gas, being stuck at traffic signals for really long. From a, a traffic standpoint, we've also completed, you know, the street reconstruction program and now started back in, on our reconstruction program utilities, but also keeping that and coupling that with our mill and overlay projects, to making sure that every tax dollar we spend is spent wisely and we fully maximize the life of the pavement, before we come back and do a utility reconstruction project. From a qualification standpoint, um, you know, I acknowledge the fact that I'm like, and I've had the privilege of talking to some of the other applicants out in the hall, and I realize they're all administrators currently. Uh, but the reality is I do oversee a budget of ten point eight million dollars and an operating budget with a staff of twenty-five plus itself. On top of that, with multiple million dollars in capital projects, um, moving forward, um, at the same time.
Yeah, so noise, yeah. Is there something I'm doing?
No, everything, everybody's muted on, uh.
No, it's, it, it, it was doing this the other day at the planning committee meeting. One of the speakers given feedback.
This one? Cause mine is doing it too.
Yeah, there's one over here.
Sorry, Mark.
Always. That's what matters. One of the benefits of working for publicly, we impact every single resident, every single property on everything. Whether it be providing safe, clean, reliable water, treating, collecting, and then transporting the treatment to wastewater, providing a transportation network, uh, for people to get, um, work, school. And so from a qualification standpoint, just from, from doing the job, interacting, supporting residents, just about their normal daily. From an academic standpoint, obviously I have an undergrad in civil engineering and a master's in public administration. I've completed some coursework at Naval Postgraduate School out in Monterey, California. And then continuing education along the way, um, on a variety of things. So, that's really what sets, sets me here before you all today. And I think, what I'm looking forward to in this role or what drew me to it, it's one of the things I really appreciate what this, this word, we're big enough. We have big city problems and challenges, or small enough, we can actually make a difference against the army. Um, and develop relationships over the long. I think one of the things people don't realize is Crystal's one of the, in the top fifty for size of cities in, so. So it's, it's, it's right size.
Alright.
Good. Question number two, describe how you would build trust with the city council and staff.
So I think that, you know, the trust is what makes world around. And so, really, I would start out with having one-on-one meetings with everybody. Um, you know, at the end of the day, we might disagree on a variety of things for a variety of reasons, but, you all ran for office because of that commitment to public service and you want to make a difference. Um, I think that is the tide that binds us all, and so I want to learn more about why that was. Um, and I'm a doer, so how can we make that thing, how can we make that happen and really do it not only, um, if it's, you know, your respective issue, but really coming together? You know, the budget is how we make things happen in the city of Crystal. And so how do we make sure that the budget reflects our priorities? Um, and meets the residents where they're at to deliver the services, obviously there's.
Make that go away.
Matt, you work your magic. I'm gonna try to pull two mics big.
I, I think, I think it's something to do with the connection of the speaker.
If I hold my hand over it and push it to the side, it stops. So I'm just gonna keep my hand there and not move it.
Actually, certain speakers.
Kind of like a TV antenna back in the day.
Yeah, it is. Okay.
Alright.
Working for now.
I'm talking to move.
We're going to continue, we're okay?
Okay.
Thank you, Olga. Try to find a glove for that speaker.
Okay.
Alright. Where were we?
Question three. Yeah, no, you were done answering.
Number three, describe a time when you made a mistake at work. How did you deal with the situation and what was the outcome?
The best example of that is, I believe, is in our first, uh, utility reconstruction project. There was a miscommunication, between, I'm not sure if it was my team or the contractor, whoever, uh, but trees that were scheduled to come down, were cut down before we notified the homeowners that, hey, this, we told them we were going to cut down trees, we didn't have a time. The plan was to give them a notice before it happened, but due to this communication, it happened. That was a very long day. Um, and, and the, and rightfully so, the residents were concerned about the fact that we cut down trees without notification. So we obviously talked through that and talked how the replacement program works, but more importantly, that shifted our entire approach. And so, now when we talk about tree removals in our utility reconstruction projects, it's literally from, the informational package for next year's project, they've already received a packet that talks about tree removals and the why. Are you, we have a YouTube video for our utility reconstruction that again, talks about tree repeats. Um, we will meet with them individually, once we know what that scope is, to give them a heads up. And then first newsletters that go out as part of the project. Um, it's possible to, because as we all know, trees are assets and people are very passionate about it. And so, really trying to communicate that, that how, that whole process, then really how worth, you remove a tree, uh, as part of the utility reconstruction project, those homeowners get a replacement on their property if they can fit. If it doesn't, we actually try to offer one to a neighbor if they have, and if that doesn't work, then we actually plant that tree in park. So in our utility reconstruction project, it is supposed to, uh, one, one replacement somewhere in the city, if not. But really, that learning curve was, there was a miscommunication, but let's change the structure for how we communicate that in, to our residents in the project areas.
Still working that speaker.
I like hold my hand, it'll be even louder.
Try and let it go.
As yours doing it too?
Yeah. And I tried my, I tried the Olga technique and it didn't work.
Okay, so I'll continue, Mark, with question number four. How would you reach or serve diverse groups or traditionally underserved populations within our community?
The biggest way we've done that, um, at the public works perspective is we actually went and looked at our job description. And we looked at job descriptions of what are some qualifications in there, that we had for applicants that really don't make sense, or quite frankly, are something new. It's what we did with that is make sure we moved the requirement for a commercial driver's license. And so what we said is, you know what, we can take employees, and send them to get their commercial driver's license. And, um, there is a cost to us to do that, but that's part of our investment. Because, uh, one of the things I'm personally, uh, passionate about is income inequality. And so if we can, um, provide, a way to have people, you know, have that barrier of a CBL not be a barrier and then train them up. And, um, I will say by removing that requirement, two of our employees, we have two employees that we wouldn't have otherwise had. Um, one of them is a Crystal resident and one of them's a New Hope resident. Um, and they're absolutely a value to our team because of, us take a second look and saying, yes, I, I realize this is in there, but what is the history there and do we really need that?
And question number five, describe your experience working collaboratively with other units of government or organizations. And describe how building these types of relationships benefited the community that you worked in.
So the best example of that is the, the Gulkey Stormwater Project. Uh, this project has literally been kind of in the mix for five plus years. Um, at a high level for who we had to interact with, and I'll go into this later. Uh, we had school district fair school, I had the Minnesota Department of, uh, Resource Involved, Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, the city of Robinsdale, Shingle Creek Watershed, and then also New Hope, Crystal, Robinsdale, Brooklyn Center, and Minneapolis are all different groups we had to work with, to move this project through. Fundamentally, what happens is water from the city of New Hope flows through Crystal, it is then pumped into Robinsdale, flows through Brooklyn Center into Minneapolis. The only way it leaves the city of Crystals is pumped out of Gulkey Pond. Obviously, if we're pumping water, we don't want to flood neighbors downstream. And so, this is where we worked with Watershed and the five cities to see what we could do potentially with our increasing our pumping, help move the water through the system, um, to reduce risk to our residents. And what we found through that study actually is we were able to help, reduce, lead or not, the duration of flooding. So how long homes would be flooded downstream in Robinsdale? We could pump more, and I'm not going to go into the why of that. But if by us being able to have basically enhanced pumping option, we could benefit, you know, neighbors, a neighboring city as well. And so, working through this process, we had to build support, build a real coalition, um, to get that done and move this through the process. I mean, it was, you know, years working with the pollution control agency and the DNR to get the approvals, to lower the pond level, to dredge all the material out and, and most recently, um, revising the stormwater agreement, the original nineteen sixty-two stormwater agreement for the city of Robinsdale. But fundamentally, I would offer you that that project, as long as it took, is the biggest thing that this city has done for stormwater management in the city, since that original nineteen sixty-two agreement, in terms of our improved ability to pump water, manage water, not only here in the city of Crystal, but across basically all five communities. And so that really took a lot of, of effort and coordination, uh, working with a lot of different stakeholders. Having the relationship and building trust, because, you know, pumping water impacts neighboring properties. Um, we are doing a little bit of work in the city of Robinsdale, and so it was really, that we're all basically coming forward in transparently with this common goal and working together, needs to deliver a project that will ultimately meet that goal, that could serve us to a number.
Okay. Uh, number six, uh, in your current or previous role, what is the most difficult decision you have made and how did you come to that decision?
Um, the, one of the, the more difficult decisions, um, that we've made that I think is, it's been good, uh, but challenging is we've narrowed the streets a little bit. And, and it sounds not necessarily difficult in the sense that, well, it's, you know, less impervious area and it's less of plow and it's less of paved. But it does impact the community. Um, you know, we, we don't necessarily have sidewalks, every street, the street is where people walk, especially. Um, but really in looking at that, from the, from all the different standpoints, right? So, yes, we're reducing our long-term costs. We're reducing stormwater we have to manage by having narrower streets. Um, there is still space for residents need to move that. When you look across the entire network, you can realize that most of our city streets have three, seven hundred cars a week, which is less than a car a minute during the peak hour. If you were walking in that space, if you were recreating in that space, it's still a reasonable experience, you know, growing and conquering. But that also respects the long-term needs of the city in that, every, every smaller bit of asphalt we can have is less asphalt with as plow, it's less asphalt we have to replace, ultimately. And quite frankly, it's more green space too, which also is not only for a curb appeal, it's more green space, but it's less storm. And so it's really taking that holistic view of something and not just focusing on one. Now, obviously, we work for the fire department to make sure our fire trucks can still get through to provide that public safety. Was really trying to kind of have a comprehensive way to look at small problems. So as we look over the long term, we just, quite frankly, save, save money, um, while we're delivering.
So, uh, I'd like to do a follow-up question on that. So the difficult, difficulty of the decision was that there was a, there was a cost to it.
Exactly. Yeah, there's a cost. I think the difficulty included the change. And some people, when they, when they feel narrower roads, there's a concern that comes with that, whether it be, and the emergency vehicles get through. Um, what about on-street parking? What about shared common use? Um, it's kind of where it becomes a challenge of, of balancing all the.
Um, number seven, describe a situation that you feel demonstrates your integrity and ethical standards.
One of the things I'm really proud of, uh, with my staff is that they, we, I'm, in developing the team, we don't just, I don't just say, here's the decision goes for it. It's really trying, here's the thought process behind it. Here is why we do certain things or what we need. And so the most recent example I have, um, that, that really would highlight that, is we did the shutdown of the water main on Thirty-Sixth Avenue. Uh, we're doing the water work and then we have private work going on. At about midnight, um, there was a, oh, there's a leaky valve that was in, and the decision was made, we are going to go and, so at midnight, after we've been, our staff been working for a number of hours, the decision was made that we are going to spend taxpayer dollars to remove this problem out. We're going to do it, we're going to do it now. So the reason that was, we talked, so from an ethical or kind of standpoint is we were, kind of it was an unplanned expenditure. If we were being a contractor, aren't there, we're going to pay them an extra like five thousand dollars. However, when you look at the total, we were already paying for all the traffic. We already had all the water mains shut down due to every other project that was going on. So from an opportunity cost standpoint, there was no better time to do it, because all the residents impacted by that water outage was already, it's also a leaky valve, so it's creating ongoing problems to the city. And so the decision was made, yes, we're going after it. What I tell my staff is, what is the right thing? Okay, let's do that. And in that moment, that night, when they saw that and they, they didn't check with him, but, this is the times go after these, these, they were right. And so now this problem valve out of, and won't be a problem for provided. So, me, that really reflects not only my leadership style, but just trying to agree on, uh, what is the right thing to do? Okay, let's do that. It may cost more money. And I'm not saying that, I mean, flip it with money by any stretch. But our currency really is. And not having to shut down those residents for water for multiple times. And not having to shut down those residents for water for multiple times or. Be right there and have this problem linger. That helps build the public trust.
Number eight. Yep, number eight. Uh what have you done in your current position or previous positions? That made a significant difference to the organization?
I would leave with um public works two point O. Mary touched on that in terms of just changing, changing the the culture within public works. Um but beyond that, I would say that my passion and energy for this city, I would hope somewhat contagious and does overflow. And so um. It's just really trying to not only push my staff, but also my peers of. What are ways we can do things better? I think example of that is. I always started, we started, I started using PowerPoint presentations during council to present stuff, right? I'm a visual person, short, sweet, here's the information. Um and so that kind of spilled over and now that's the standard. So I think that's just a small example of. Uh a tweak or a passion that I brought that have, I think, improved it. I also really like the long term plan and so for us, we've taken that long term plan that's, you know. Ten years on the books and from an infrastructure standpoint. We've looked at it from up to a hundred and fifty. And what I mean, how we make choices on spending taxpayer dollars and replacing the infrastructure and so. I think that that positive energy and I would hope it's contagious uh this really passion for the city is. Is what I've inspired not only with my staff, but also those that come in contact with.
Number nine, if you were hired for this position and are still with the organization five years from now. How do you think the org- organization will be different?
First and foremost, I think the. I hope that that contagious energy is continuing to spill not only among staff, none of the council, but among the city in general. I think we have a lot of really exciting things going on. I think we can work to improve the way we message that. And that's why I think I'm excited about the diversity and inclusion committee. One of the things I'm working on is kind of that public messaging and how we improve. I think there's a lot of opportunity there. Um I look forward to to the work they're gonna do. One of the big um areas that I'm passionate about is storytelling and so I think one area. Uh that we could definitely improve on is connecting the, your council goals with the budget because the budget really is how we get stuff. And I think there's a lot of great stuff in there that ties back to the council goals and I think there's the opportunity to tell that story better. So what I would offer is 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 the five year perspective is really that. We look at our council goals and we can link that to the budget, we can link that to what our residents' experiences are day to day here in the city. Whether at local playground, whether they're just, you know, going about their business at their house, whether they're shopping in the local. Um really just trying to tie all that together. Um that's not to say it isn't happening now, but I think we could do a better job and. And to me, that's how you build the energies, trying to kind of get some synergy going out there.
And this is question number ten, provide an example of how you have been an a change agent in your organization.
I think the biggest uh. Change that we've done is within, within public works, so I'm not gonna talk city. In that city is really having some hard conversations on equipment and and tasks. When I first started uh before staff would go on utility locates every day, they would literally be digging through paper file. The amount of time lost on that was unbelievable and so. We leverage change, we had the conversation to change and we put tablets, you know. With all the information in each utility staff members hands, so they now were able to spend more time out actually doing the work. That's locating this, providing the service to our residents. I think another great example, and this was kind of in motion before I started, was quite simply the fuel pumps and just continued to advocate that at public works. The amount of staff time we would have lost driving over to the old fuel school um at Wenack and Forty Second to fill up gas. And you couldn't do it, do it at certain times of day, right? Because the schools were there getting gas. That's time lost from serving our residents and so continue to advocate for a fueling station. Um on the public works ground is freeing up more time to serve the residents, which that's what it's all about. So really looking at, as you talk about equipment and what. What can we do that frees up staff time? From things that aren't quite as much of a value add to our residents, the things that will be a value add. And look at the vacuum we purchased too. You know, we used to have a smaller. Trailer mounted vacuums, we used it just to suck all the debris out of. The other one was so small, they'd spend more time going to dump it than actually doing it. So yes, we made an investment in a larger one, but now the staff spent more time out actually moving the debris. From the catch base, which is what we need to do to serve the residents and so it's. It's making very thoughtful and intentional decisions on the equipment we have that we need to get the job done. With the ultimate focus being, what is the impact for our residents and is that gonna?
Alright.
Did you move your hand? Is that what happened?
I'm trying different. Pressure. So we're on question number eleven out of um this couple of more. Um so if you could provide an example of a time when you were proactive with solving a small problem before it turned into a major problem.
One of the um. The nuances of of um my job is generally when when people are frustrated about certain things. Um and they, and they come to me with questions on whatever and so we actually had one recently. Where um it was discovered that for whatever reason, a resident had built a driveway. Partially on city right of way property. So basically, they're up against what it had was a, it was a plaid easement or platted right of way for an alley. And for whatever reason, whoever knows, long ago they built it and so this issue was flagged. Um and so we were starting the, starting to work with the homeowner. Um because they built stuff on city right of way. Unfortunately, it turns out that homeowner passed away and the house was for sale and so. This became an issue because the person that was purchasing the home may have thought this driveway was a legal driveway, which it wasn't. Um and so during potential title search, this could have flagged a problem that would have impacted closing and so we. I worked very quickly uh with the realtor and the closing company and. We've done this where we we basically um license that driveway to be in that space. Um because at this point in time, we have no plans for future developments. It makes sense with the way that home is laid out, it's, it is vital for them to have this space for them to actually offer access to the backyard. Um and so we worked really quickly to. Um get this resolved in a way that's consistent with what we've done in other areas, but not impact the closing. Um this quite frankly, new future crystal resident. Um and so it's seemingly small because it's one home. But it very much could have impacted the sale of that home and potentially us getting a new resident so. Um being proactive and intentional and and communicating with everybody involved to get that done as quick as possible. Um definitely could have escalated from becoming a long term problem with. A new homeowner having stuff, it's not.
Okay, question twelve, uh why should the Crystal City Council select you as their next city?
I'm passionate, I love what I do and I love the city. I think. One of the things that I'm really proud of about the city is kind of that long term plan that's your budget. Like I know it sounds ridiculously. Nerdy to say that, but. I think we're being thoughtful with how we're doing stuff and I know from a public work standpoint. That's really played into operational decisions we've made and and kind of our own long term planning. Um obviously, I am high energy, I think that is fairly apparent. Um and I'm also committed to doing the work ethic. You probably know if you email me regardless of the time, you will probably get a pretty quick. But fundamentally, my belief is quite that this change happens. We either can drive the change or respond to the change. I tend to lay on the driving the change side. So let's lean in, let's push forward. Things may happen, absolutely, adjustments may be had, absolutely. But let's be proactive in determining our futures instead of reacting and letting things just happen. Um I also have a very extensive uh network in terms of this professional organizations. Profession or regular networks. I work with Chief Larson all the time, obviously just roll towards the West Metro Fire Rescue Board. Uh Tim Pratt with Hampton Recycling Group, I was actually on the interview committee that interviewed him. I also have experience in Golden Valley, um as one of my other duties at the time was recycling coordinator and I worked with Minnetonka and Plymouth. On recycling. You look at C C X media, again, this position sits on that board. I've known Dave Kaiser and Shannon for years and have a, I actually talked to Dave earlier today or yesterday about something else and so. I just have a really established network. Um with the Joint Water Commission, I've been obviously on the advisory committee since I started, but even before that, I wasn't. Golden Valley, I was working with. So I know uh the neighboring city managers. Beyond that, at kind of the state level, being involved in fencing consortium, you know, we've had twenty eight agents now joining this. That I've had the privilege and honor of leading. You had twenty, actually clearly twenty seven council. Join in this effort that I've had the privilege of leading. So really that's putting their trust in me. And my ability to communicate what we're doing in a way that they support and believe in. And at the national level, I have contacts with um all major representatives. Point that with um you know. Congressman Omar, like her chief of staff and I are on a first name basis and I've literally texted him questions, he called me back and we worked through. Uh the little issue it was and so. As much as this job is about working with you all and delivering goals, the professional network that plays into that is vital. Um you know, we are not an island here in the city. We have five neighboring. And I know those players and I know the history and I have a positive working relationship with all of them. In addition to, you know, my time on the watershed uh with both watersheds. I had the privilege of um of being here and you all know me. And I think one thing is that I am very transparent in my energy for stuff and how I approach things, I do not have a. And so I sincerely believe that uh my track record is, it speaks for itself and. And I'm proud of that and I'm proud of the work we continue to do together.
Alright, so. This will be interesting, uh last question thirteen. And we do have some additional time, so. Um I don't know if you'll have me, but do you have any additional questions for us?
I think, you know, for you all, Anne was in the role for twenty one years. So what really excites you about the future? As it relates to this role, but just kind of. Where things are going right now with with the changes happening.
What excites us about the future?
Yeah, so Anne was in the role, so it's, you know. With a new city manager, what what are you optimistic or hopeful about?
I can, go ahead. I'm sorry, um. I I think there, when I think about, at least for me individually. Um the exciting part about this is. Uh this council, this is, this is probably one of the biggest legacy pieces that uh. Or is some of the things that we, decisions that we've made that happen, I mean, you think. Anne was uh the city manager for twenty something years. Um now, I think I would hope that the next city manager would be here for twenty seven years. Now, that's probably not a reality, right? But. I mean, I can speak frankly, you know, my term is up. I didn't seek reelection, right? So but my decision as the, the decision that we make will outlast. Pretty, could outlast all of us on this council, right? And and so I think that's a, I I'm, I'm excited because I recognize the weight of that. But it's, I get to kind of say, this is that, that huge legacy piece, you know, kind of some, there's some other things that we've done, you know, in the city, as you know, but. And that's what I, yeah, I get. You know, I was like, okay, well, I'm I'm okay with scouring and spending, I I probably spent maybe. Probably thirty hours going over all the papers, the the, the applications and the videos. And doing all that and not being aggravated by it, but being excited about it.
Anyone else?
I I could just chime uh chime in and say that. You know, we have new council members coming on board next year along with a new city manager. So I'm looking forward to other new ideas that may come of this, you know, with opportunities and. Fresh set of eyes on some things. So I'm looking forward to seeing the direction that the city goes.
I think we, we have a really wonderful foundation that we really worked on, um you know, over the, the, over the years as a team. Um and the potential is, is really exciting, which direction Crystal will go from, from, from. With, with the new council coming in, Nancy, and um with a new manager simultaneously, so. Um there is just incredible potential for growth. Um and and that is very exciting to me, so. And there's just a lot of different facets of that with. Being in the twin cities and in the, in the diverse community that we have and so. I I'm, I'm really looking forward to it and like Brandon, I'm, I'm also leaving, but I'm also still a resident here, so. So it'll be really wonderful to watch.
What else?
And we need a new sound system, that's what I'm excited about.
So um. You know, I I've been here for a minute and. You know, coming here, I I didn't come with a whole lot of agenda, but but really what came to the forefront. Was some of my financial goals and and trying to bring security to. To the the finances of Crystal and um. At the end of the day, it was that security, it wasn't just about being debt free, it was about having. Uh having a plan in place that could be sustainable. When we looked at a lot of the different, different areas of services. Um and I asked how these things got funded. It was amazing to me to see how many of them weren't funded. Especially in the capital realms. Uh building, we came, when I got here, there was no funding for the building fund, period. There was nothing coming in. Uh some of the other funds, their only uh accumulation was that of interest based on their, their balances. So for me, it was, you know, my history is uh I've had some very. Difficult financial times in my life. I learned some very personal. I've had personal tragedy in that realm and I learned some things that really kind of stuck out to me. I took those lessons and how I've applied them personally, I've brought them into my, my philosophy in the city. So it's exciting for me to see. The process, you know, when I came in, I thought it was gonna happen faster and, you know, you you have a vision, you see it, well, let's get it done. And that was my thought process. Um it just doesn't work that way in government. Um I'm excited to find. Find a continuation of that, find someone who understands those philosophies and can. Uh go beyond what my imagination is. I I really want somebody who, who uh. Will have the integrity and move forward in in ways that I can't even come up with. That's what I'm looking for. I'm really looking for someone who's way smarter than me, way brighter than me, and accomplish a lot more than me. And I'm excited for that. I think we can pull this off.
Saying that's one of the big things where I would say is a, an example of how Chris Public Works is really trying to take that council directive or. Long term stability, right? Because. The way you fund infrastructure is either you raise revenue or you cut the stuff you need to maintain and we know the reality. And so we really try to work intentionally to find that balance or to work towards that balance through a variety. Um but really trying to carry, carry that vision out by listening to the council. Um Homer Simpson says, alright kids, just boy, just because I don't care, doesn't mean I'm not. I think that that speaks a lot. First of all, the importance of listening, that's active listening, but you need to show that you care. I think that's the big thing and so this really goes to my next question, it's because I care about the city and I care about success and. What is the best way and we don't, you don't all have the answers you want, but what do you see communication like between you and the city? And I'm not talking here at a council meeting, I'm just like, what? What are you looking for, for how that dialogue opens so that you have those clear lines of communication for, for what's important to you or questions you have? Um because that's, that's ultimately an important part of us, our collective success.
Um I, and I think that's probably why I was. She's, you know, is great, but it's probably, I'd say one of my, oh no, Anne's gone, right? Um and it, and it immediately happened was um I'm, I got really spoiled by not just sitting next to. Right, but um. I could, I mean, not that I took advantage of texting her at any time, right? But she was incredible about communicating everything. Whether it's just little quick reminders as far as saying, hey, remember you got, who had the fireboard meeting or you got this meeting coming up? And um. To to just be able to have that to help, I mean, she did a really good job at making us look good, but then even me being somebody. Um having been new, when I was new on the council. Making sure I had all the information I needed to make the decisions and um. And, and, and represent well. Um, and so I, I think. That is effective. And when I thought big picture about the, the term of, you know, her. Career and having to deal with multiple, you know, councils and multiple personalities and. And um, that was one of the things I think she was a very big, strong. Point of hers was being able to communicate to, to us. Now. You know, there, there could be different questions as far as what was being communicated, right? But I never felt like. Um, if I asked a question that I didn't get an answer. And I think there's many times you were, you know, you, you would have been involved on, you know, if I sent an email. You know, it, it, it was just like that quick, you know, the very fluid response.
Yeah. Yeah, one of the things I look forward to and it, and certainly did with Anne was um, trying to get together with her one-on-one whenever we could. And. I know when I first started on council, I tried to do it once a month, just have come into council chamber or. Conference room and just have dialogue with her, go over any issues or concerns, answer questions to Brennan's point, cause I was new. And the learning curve was pretty steep. So I really appreciated that. And I think ongoing, it was, it, it's a nice way to keep tabs on. What's going on beyond our little bubble here and see what's going on in the city. What are you hearing from staff or? Residents and from other council members, because sometimes we don't hear where we're not in on those conversations. Of concern with other council members. So I was able to glean more from that. So I, I look forward to one-on-one dialogues too.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, I, I don't know how much more I can answer. I mean, they sound very similar to my response. I'm not gonna waste your time. Alright, well, I sincerely appreciate the time and the opportunity to be here. Um. I'm excited about this opportunity for the city. And that's not just saying for me. Is to your point, I mean, there's. Any change brings opportunity. And I'm excited for what that looks like, excited to be a part of it and uh. I mean, we have challenges ahead. I'm not naive for that. Um, but I think. Challenges have potential to bring out a lot of success and I'm, I'm looking forward to see what that looks like. So I appreciate the time. If you have any final questions, by all means. Otherwise, have a wonderful evening.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you for the questions. Thank you, Mark. Alright, we'll continue this meeting again. Alright, at this time, I'd like to reconvene the city council meeting and um, we have. Our paperwork all messed up.
No, you have your.
Let's be nice. Alright, Adam is here for his interview. Welcome, Adam. Thank you. Uh, my name is Jim Adams. I'm the mayor of Crystal. I've been here for ten years, uh, and. Why don't you guys do introductions as well?
Uh, absolutely. I've, Brendan Banks, I've been on city council for uh, four years. Um. And I represent Ward two, which is, say, the southern. Quarter of, of the, of, of the city. We just changed our, our map lines. So, so the, the southern uh. The portion is gonna look, Ward two is gonna look different, uh, starting, starting next year, but.
I'm Teresa Kaiser. I represent Ward one. Pardon me, I've been on the council for four years. So the south western quadrant. So. Whatever.
I have Nancy LaRoche. I'm section one, which covers wards one and two. So Teresa's ward as well as Brennan's and I am. Currently serving my second term and my sixth year on the council.
And I'm Olga Parsons. I'm, um, this is my eighth year and final year in the council. I've served two terms and I represent section two, which is north half of Crystal.
And I'm David Cummings, uh, Ward four, which is.
Did we mention?
Two years, yeah, two years.
The audio, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, and two years on the council.
We've been, we've been putting audio today for some reason.
Adam, are you hearing that static over there? I don't know if you have a speaker and are you?
Oh.
Am I hearing this?
Yeah. Do you hear a little bit of?
I hear the static.
Yeah, it might be feeding through our microphone, so we apologize. Yeah.
Um. Yeah, unfortunately, we haven't been able to keep it from happening. So. It's just a special test we have for the interviewers.
I, I'm used to this stuff, audio issues, dynamics.
Sure.
Virtual and we suffered our share. Look, we got them worked on now, but.
Good. Well, we have thirteen questions for you. You got about fifteen minutes or fifty minutes to answer them.
You sounded like a game show there.
And uh, we'll just take turns asking you questions and we'll get started right away. So you have more time to, to answer. Uh, first question I'll read is, please tell us what interests you about this position? And highlight key qualifications that make you the best person for the job.
Uh, well, I, I have a background with familiarity. First of all, um, as. My first house that my wife and I bought was in Robbinsdale. And her father and her mother lived here, mother grew up here. Um, and so I spent a lot of time in the area. Uh, my in-laws are in meth. Um, so I, I was explained during the tour, um, that I have spent a lot of time in the area in Crystal. And so with that familiarity, it, I, I don't know everything about Crystal, um, you know, especially not behind the scenes, the operational aspects, but. It, it's a good city. It's, you know, it's well-run. Um, I know. Manager Norris has been here for a long time, stable. Um, it, but it's also a bigger city than Bayport and Bayport, the population's, you know, just. It's over four thousand people and that includes the still a prison. Uh, so we're actually smaller than that. And it's a full-size, full-service city. We have our own city library, city police department, uh, city fire department. Everything is water and sewer. Our, we have three marinas, largest employer in the county. There's there, we have a lot going on. Um, but there are limitations. We're fully built out. Um, we don't have a lot of opportunity for redevelopment. Um, so I am at the stage in my career where I'm looking for something that can offer more opportunity uh, to advance and. Continue to be built. Um, there's still a lot of stuff, if this isn't where I meant to be, uh, and I love Bayport, I love working for, I have a great team. Uh, they, we'll, we'll have a new mayor, but she's, uh, she's on the council already, so. We have, have a good. Um, stay out of the newspaper. We're, we're not, let me put this right, we're not in the newspaper for the wrong things. Um, so we financially sound. And a lot of our kind of. Being run well. And, but at the same time, I am. Another factor, uh, which. I not have my, I'm not my job. Um, I live in Orno, so I travel every day from Orno. Playport, it's about an hour each way. Um, Crystal, obviously, west side. About half that. Plus, so that's obviously attractive. I've been very, having spent time in Lake Elmo, which. I've been very picky on where I want to spend my time. Where do I want to work? Where do I want to? Dedicate the time that I have. So I've been very picky where, looking for where I want to spend my time. Where I want to grow. Um, I, I want to continue to grow and I think Crystal offers a lot of opportunity here. Um, not just being a larger city, but there are a lot of redevelopment opportunities. It's blue line coming in. Um, it's, it's also city manager position, which will be new for me. I'm, I'm a city administrator now. Um, but that dynamic uh, is also, I'll be honest, is attractive to me. Um, for just some of the logistical reasons. Um, things can happen a little bit quicker. Um, it's the procedure itself is, is a little bit different. So that's, that's the main reason why I'm, I'm interested in Crystal. Like I said, I have the familiarity with the background. Um, I. Crystal, I think, has a lot of things going for it. And I'm at the stage where I'm ready to. Move on. I, I've done a good job in Bayport. I think I'm, I'm comfortable now. It's, it's bittersweet. We have a great team, great staff, good council. So I feel bad leaving, but now I'm also at the point where I'm comfortable leaving and it being in good hands.
Alright, thank you. I want to dig a little bit deeper.
Sure, go ahead.
That, um, call, the, kind of the other half of that. What, what are your key qualifications? I think you kind of touched on that.
Yeah, I, yes, I'm sorry if I wasn't uh, perfectly clear with that. Uh, my qualifications for, uh. Having Crystal be a good fit for me. Um, I, I do have experience feeding. Uh, I've, I've dealt with uh, some conflict, both on the current council as well as in my previous job, uh, in Lake Elmo. Um, so I've navigated that and every, you know, with, with any council, you have seven, seven members in, in Crystal. Trying to get seven people to agree on everything all the time, there's gonna be things that there's disagreement on. Um, so trying to, trying to find that compromise and navigate that. I think any, any city manager has to, has to deal with. Um, Crystal, I think luckily has done a good job already. I mean, I think it's, you don't have a dysfunctional council. Um, but there's, there's always going to be things that, you know, there may, there may be a split. Um, we haven't had a lot of splits in Bayport, but we have had some and navigating that. And my experience has been. Provide the information, make the recommendation, you know, objectively, here's what, my, in my professional opinion, that's what you're paying for. Is what, you know, this is what the, my professional recommendation would be on this matter. And letting the council make that policy decision, but make sure that they have all the information that they need so they can make an educated decision. Um, so that, that's one item. The, the uh. As I was mentioning earlier, Bayport, it's a small city, but it's very busy. We've got highway ninety-five running through it. We've got uh, elementary school, as I mentioned, the prison. Uh, we have our full-service city. We've got a lot going on just with the three marinas alone during the summer. We, we've got multiple parks on the river. It's packed for, we're formerly South Stillwater. Uh, we're actually celebrating our centennial this year for changing our name from South Stillwater to Bayport. Um, so. While we are small, we are very busy. Our police department is very busy. Um, we've, you know, we're, we provide a lot of services for a city our size. And so that busyness of being, we're not twenty-five thousand people, we're not twenty-three thousand people. Um. But the, the expectation of a lot of our residents is very high. Um, for the size of our city. So I think that's, that's an experience that I, I do bring. Um, to, to Crystal. I don't think it's a jump necessarily directly in numbers. And we go to look at other cities, we actually have a difficult time finding a comparable city of, with our population as there just aren't many. But I, I think those two things are, are big. Significant qualifications. Um, well, the other one with any organization, but especially with governments is building trust. Um, that's something that I've always, always valued and it's, you know, in ruin trust very easily. You break that trust. Um, so it's something you, it's a constant work every time you're dealing with somebody. And that, how you build trust, you need to do what you say you're gonna do, like communicate clearly. Uh, have expectations clear because there can be a breakdown of trust. Where one person was expecting something that the other person wasn't even on the same page about having to do. Um, so that, that I think, I, I've had a lot of experience building trust, my, and that goes both ways, both with the council as well as the staff. Um, you need to, you know, advocate for staff with the council, but they also need to. Explain the council policy decision staff because it's for the good of the city. For all public servants on both sides of the face and in, in the whole building. And. If we're not serving the public, we're not doing our jobs. So the public has to trust everything that we do, both at the staff level and council. So we all have to collaborate, work together, make sure that policy deciders. Trust the staff, give them the correct information so they can make the policy decision. And that the staff trust the council to retain good employees that they can, it's a cycle, cyclical relationship. Symbiotic relationship somewhat. So, but then without that, without a successful functioning relationship. The public is going to trust you and that's, and that. That's not a good society.
Alright, second question.
Was, as I'm here.
It's not.
Kind of like snickering and laughing or, uh, cause the, the second question is. Describe how you would build trust with the city council and staff. So you can, I guess, kind of continue on.
Sure.
Path you were at. What the uh. Kind of building on what I had already said a little. Um, for communication, I think that's one of the things I do, um, and I, I'd mentioned it in my, on my earlier video interviews. Um, I, I send out weekly updates to the council. So that communication, um, you know, I, I'm constantly texting or emailing council members to provide them information. Um, as well as meeting with them in person at times. Uh, and the, the same goes with the, with the staff as well, you know, one of the discussions we had, had with the staff panel was. How, you know, my communication method and how do you think of the trust? Um, and it, it's, I don't want to say it's funny that we're both in both panels, we're talking about that, but it's because it's such a critical. Aspect of these relationships. Um, and so. Again, making sure that communication's clear. Making sure that, and, and making sure that's reasonable. I mean, I've, I've got caught, I'm sure we all have where. We may agree to something, even though we don't think it's actually gonna work out. Where we should have just stood up and said, that's not, you're not a good idea or that's, you know, the, the placating, the appeasing. In the end, often it doesn't do either side any good. Um, and you can break that trust, even though you were, like, give someone lip service, but that's what they wanted to hear. You don't want to hurt their feelings. Um, it's not always easy, but it's rarely easy, but. It, being honest, so that, that, building that trust, it, it takes integrity, it takes honesty, you know, doing the right thing, doing what you say you're gonna do. And. You know, say what you're gonna do and then do it, you know, the, the, the follow-through. And then it. It's, it's different, it's more applicable to the, the staff level, but the accountability. I, as, as the manager, I would need the council to hold me accountable. And I need the staff to hold me accountable. Um, and it goes, I have to make sure that staff is being held accountable. Uh, for the. For, to be productive and to be, to do a good job, but also if one employee is not holding, they're being held accountable. The other employees are gonna see that, the other staff are gonna see that, city, the residents may see that. Um, and. So the council needs to hold each other accountable. If the council needs to hold the staff accountable and the voters hold the council accountable. So that, that building the trust at every level, um, includes, you know, honest, clear communication. And holding each other accountable and doing what you say you're gonna do. And there's times when you're gonna need to have hard conversations. There's times when you need to, you know, things don't work out the way anybody expected or planned. But here's how we're gonna fix it. Here's what we learned and you move forward, hopefully either rebuilding that trust. Or, you know, worst case scenario. That relationship is severed. Um, I hope that wouldn't, you know, that, that, that's hopefully the, the exception. Uh, but if you're, if you're doing, if everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing, that trust can be maintained and move forward.
Alright.
Number three. Describe the time when you made a mistake at work. How did you deal with this situation and what was the outcome?
Uh, I'm gonna say I have too long of a list, but um, as I said earlier, we all, we all make mistakes. Um. One of the, kind of on the, along the lines of trust, uh, there was a. One of the most recent uh, issues that we had where I made a mistake, um, and. It went along with the, the expectations were not clear. I made an assumption and the other person. Um, in, in this case, it was the mayor. Uh, the mayor had asked that we post agendas, uh, two weeks in advance. And we had, I said, we, we can definitely try. That's something. And her, what she heard was absolutely the Monday, two Mondays before the meeting, it would be posted. And. I heard Monday, Tuesday, you know, if we didn't have anything on the agenda or the agenda kept changing. You know, as soon as possible, it'll get posted. We were always within statutory requirements and the council didn't have a. Um, the council did not have a set policy. It was just a conversation that I had had with the mayor during one of her meetings. Um, I didn't understand how important she, the emphasis and the priority that she was making it. Um, and so that was a miss. You know, the expectations were not being clear, not understood. Um, there was one issue that she, uh. Felt was very important or important to her and the, the notice wasn't the two weeks, it was only the one week. And because just the, we, uh, the way that the calendar had worked out, there's a holiday in there as well. And. She, she was upset. She told me she was very upset. And, uh. I. I, I, I explained to her and we, we had to build, rebuild the trust. Because I, you know, I apologize, I wasn't clear that that was an actual, your actual expectation. I didn't actually agree to do that two weeks. I said we would try, what she heard though is that it was going to be. You know, exactly two weeks, so it's much more formal. And so that mistake I made was one of the, I, I wish I would have. You know, realized it earlier in my life or my career is. Realized it earlier in my life or my career is that how important the expectations were to make sure it's clear and if there's questions. And then, so what we did is we, as a council, the, the council discussed this and I brought information. And there were only, it, it, you know, there's one time out of the six years I was there. So it wasn't a major issue in that regard, but that mistake I made by assuming, you know, not being clear on what. The other person wanted and I, you know, that can happen all the time. Uh, but so now I. I'm much more careful in making sure we're on the same page. I, I feel like a lot of, it's kind of repeating myself, but. That mistake, it, it can, it can, in a, in a more serious matter, because this one wasn't that serious, but. It could lead to, you know, a large conflict um, or an issue. So that was, we had to work that out and. At the end of the day, she was satisfied with. Where the council decided, we talked about the whole concept, we talked about the transparency, I mean, that, that was the point. It wasn't that the staff was trying to not be transparent, it was just more of a logistical, you know, practical reason that it hadn't been done. And had we known that it was a formal education, we would, I would have brought it to the council because. One council member can't dictate when the agenda is gonna be posted. So it was, it was a learning experience for everybody. But that, that mistake that I made by making an assumption for something relatively trivial. I, it had a large impact on my psyche, my professional attitude towards how to proceed.
And this is question number four. How would you reach or serve diverse groups or traditionally underserved populations within our community?
Well, one of the things that we learned during the pandemic at, in Bayport was. Because the, the entire service degree model was upended. Um, Bayport was closed for, uh, closed to the public uh for about a year and. We had to find new ways to communicate with people, we had to find new ways to provide services, you know, deliver those services. Um, and one of the things that we found out is there were people that. Had never been engaged and, you know, they were always kind of left out of just the, the general process. Um, so. One of the things that I, and I believe this for, you know, pre-pandemic, but you need to go to the whatever group, you need to go to the public to. Meet them where they are. Um, and I think cities, it's been really difficult with municipal government because government in general is so slow to catch up to. You know, a lot of different things, um, as far as technology or social media, the various forms of communication. You need, you know, people don't communicate just by sending mail anymore, you know. Years ago, we went to email, now people are on social media, people are on, you know, YouTube, there's, it's a lot more dynamic, a lot more different. So you have to go where they are, where they get, where they get their information. You can't just assume that by sending a letter. Or a postcard that they're gonna, gonna read it. Um, so having a broad, diverse. Uh, means of communicating information regardless of what that communication is. That I think is one, one aspect of how to reach various groups, you know, and that's, that's just one example. Um, but. The, the other half of that is making the effort, you know, you may, it may be a small group of people who have been. Non-participants in the process, um, not necessarily actively excluded, but have not been engaged, have not been participating for one reason or another. Either because they felt excluded or there was actual, actual, you know, exclusion or leaving people out. That. Making the effort and continuing to make the effort, even we had our first uh. One of the priorities for the council of this in twenty twenty-two day port was to engage our business community more. It's something that we really felt a need after the pandemic. It was such a hard hit. We also had a major highway project to our. Highway ninety-five, which is kind of our business main street. Um, so that was, it was, it was good on one hand because the businesses. Were impacted negatively from the construction as well as the pandemic and it was all over once, but it is also. Not good, you know, it really hurt businesses. So we created a, uh, we, this business roundtable and. We only had three businesses show up first meeting out of fifty. We're not giving up just because, you know, the city can't give up just because you don't get a lot of participation, you have to keep, keep going and keep trying to get. Fighting, asking people to, you know, you can throw a party and no one will come and that's, you know, sometimes feels futile, but you can't. Want, you can't do it just one time, whatever the issue is, whoever the group is, you have to continually keep, you know. Reaching out and trying to engage people, um, especially those groups that traditionally or historically have not been engaged. It may be so foreign to them or so new that to participate in the process that. It's gonna probably take some time for them to get comfortable. To really open up and participate. That would be, tho- those aspects are what I would really try to focus on and it's just making sure that we're making the effort and then. I guess the, the other thing lastly would be. Not just, so they, so they feel heard, so they felt like there, it was worth their time. You know, if we just have a meeting with some, with a group and nothing really comes of it, nothing's done, now the city doesn't do anything about it, it just. You know, if you send out a survey and you don't do anything with the survey results. What, what's the point of filling out the survey if someone's listening? So it's not just, you actually have to hear them and engage with them and. It goes back to the follow through, you have to be accountable for what you said you're gonna do.
Uh, now for question five, um, describe your experience working collaboratively with other units of government or organizations. And describe how building these types of relationships benefited the community or organization you work for.
Uh, one, one, just one off the top of my head, uh, one of the fun projects that I've been able to work on, uh, has been with, with Russian county. Uh, through their land and water legacy program, uh, we. There, we, the city was able to purchase through a conservation grant, uh, both through the state and the county. Um, and we also got private funding through Anderson Windows, but we purchased eleven acres of land on the, on St. Clair River. And we're able to turn that into a, uh, we were gonna move the city, one of the city bolt launches to it, but now we're, actually our plans are changing. Uh, but we worked very closely with the county on that project. Um, and uh. We, that was in twenty twenty when we were actually able to close on that. Uh, so working with the state on the grant process, working with the county on their grant process, um, was. We, we had to work very closely on that. Uh, some of the other, I, I worked with. As a city, you work with a lot of different uh, other jurisdictions. Uh, our fire service provides fire. Fire service, our fire department provides fire service for three of the community, people, more rights, townships. Um, it's the Bayport Fire Department. But we, we serve those, we have, right now we're in the middle of a fifteen year contract. Um, so we had to work very closely with them, uh, because the, the future, the sustainability of our fire service. Um, I know Crystal has the West Metro District. Um, that's one of the things that we've been talking about is, do we want to create a district or what is this gonna look like at the end of this fifteen year agreement? Uh, we all went in on building our current fire station that we just built in two thousand fifteen. Um, so. We have to work with them. It's not all equal though. We have one city that's about fifty percent. Then the other, the rest of the balance, the other fifty percent is split up by three cities or two townships and city. So it's. Navigating that relationship is everybody feel like they're paying a fair shares, everybody carrying their weight. Um, there, there's been conflict with that and so it's, it's a constant, you know, again, each jurisdiction has to trust each other. Um, so making sure you're transparent, making sure you're writing the information. We, we work very closely with this prison, the department corrections, because there's still a lot of prison in this Bayport. Um, as well as the schools, we, you know, we work very closely with the school, um, that's the elementary school, that's. Uh, we're currently doing a safety uh, after. Uh, earlier this year, um, our, more recent uh, school shooting, we, those are demands in the community, mother parents. Wanted to make sure that something can be done in this period. So we've been meeting our police chief. We've been meeting with the, with the school staff to make sure, like, uh, safety training, security, uh, audits. Um, some of the other, uh, I mean, Washington County, we work with a lot of different things. But it, it all comes down to, you know, trying to find a, you know, common goal and make sure that you maintain that trust. Um, and there aren't, there, there are some times when the interests are different, so it's balancing those interests. Um, but as long as you maintain the, the trust and it, you usually can find a compromise. Compromise, nobody gets what they want, but it, you know, if we're both serving the public, then at least we can. Find what's best for the, the, the public.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, uh, number six, uh, in your current or previous role, what is the most difficult decision you have had, you've made and how did you come to that decision?
Um, I would say, well. Apologize, I don't apologize for talking about trust. Um, the most difficult decision I had to make in Bayport uh was regarding a staff member. I had also included a council member. Um, without going into too uh much detail, the, there was a performance issue with this one particular staff member. And there had been, uh, there had been concerns before I even got there. And so I came on as the administrator in Bayport and this employee wasn't performing where they should be. And so after, after some time, I started meeting, I, I, I had been meeting with her, um, she was a department head. In finance and the. Sorry, it's with the personnel, I want to make sure, let's say the, um, the. There were some issues that I had seen and I put our performance improvement plan up standard, uh, and. As part of that, she, she wasn't getting some of the goals that we had agreed upon and so it was getting closer to, well, something's gonna need to be done. The, the caveat or the nuance with that is her, we had, I, there was a council member who happened to be, he was a former billing official. So he had retired and he was very close with this employee. And he had retired and ran for council right before, and that was in two thousand sixteen, I started in February seventeen. So he started in January and I started in February. Uh, um, on, you know, he was on council and they, they had a very close relationship, which. You know, normally wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily be a problem, but that gets. The insubordination, you know, going around my back and going directly to one council member by the staff person. Uh, and, and after being told, you know, you shouldn't be going to talk to them because at least if you're gonna do that, at least tell me what you're talking about. So we're on the same page because you may not have all the information and then I have to, it just creates a mess. Well. Fast forward to, her performance hadn't been going well and the council member was asking, why are you picking on her? And I tried to explain it to him. And I, I got access to her, her emails, um, because there was some information that was being. You know, the staff and I, the staff would have a staff meeting and this council member would know about stuff before I'd even be able to tell the council. And none, none of it was good or bad, you know, it wasn't inappropriate, but I, you know. Allow me as the administrator to inform the council of whatever, you know, during my weekly update. And so that became a problem and they were, they were emailing back and forth. The, so I had to deal with that and it was, it was right at the audit time and it was, you know, I had to navigate that. He, but finally I, I was at the point where I can't trust this employee anymore. And she's not performing at all what I need to do and even after telling her, um. To, you know, these are the things you need to do, she wouldn't do it. And then come to find out, but what I discovered actually in the email was that she allowed the council members. In-laws, she waived their assessment, uh, interest on her, you know, unilaterally, um, for a street project. Uh, or a sidewalk project and that, that was the final, that was the final straw. I'm like. That is so, you know, you can't do that. So, so that, that was the final straw and. I had to meet with the mayor, meet with the deputy mayor and the city attorney and navigate that. But making that decision and navigating that was, it was incredibly difficult and not comfortable. Um, we only have a five-person council, so there's, you know, this one customer who also, you know, obviously he lives, he's a resident. Um, he was a former building official, very, you know, very popular in town. Um, so it was, it was a delicate process that I had to follow. She resigned in lieu of termination, um. We had that meeting, the same day we also had our emergency meeting for the pandemic. So as a result of it. So I'm, I'm not trying to labor this, but as a result of that, we were without a finance person for uh, almost eighteen months. Which I ended up carrying a lot of that, that, that work, doing that work, um, but. That, that was not just the fallout of it, but the, that whole process navigating that was. Incredibly difficult because it involves so many different aspects and nuances to, you know. That type of situation, um, wasn't easy, but it was the right thing to do and that's why I felt. I, I've, during my time at Bayport, I've tried to take on a, I studied stoicism. Um, you know, I, I'm not sure if anybody, how familiar I with that, but, you know. You can't control how other people are gonna feel, you can't, you can't control how you react, you can't, you know, you can't control external things. Um, so I was doing the right thing, you know, she needed to be fired, she needed to be disciplined. And the council member may be upset, but I was doing everything ethically and legally and correct. Um, and if the, if he wants to get the rest of the council to fire me, I was doing a job, so I was worried about that, but. I still am not trying to pick a fight with, uh, that's not, that's not a good tactic or practice for any city, you know, chief administrative officer. So that was, that was the most difficult thing I've had to do, but it was absolutely the right thing. And the one thing I will add, the rest of the staff, it was demoralizing for the rest of the staff of that way not being held accountable for their underperformance. Because everybody else can see it and the morale has, you know, skyrocketed after that, it, it's a way better team. Um, because that was addressed finally after many years of not being addressed. There are multiple of that, that's.
Six questions in twenty minutes.
Six question in twenty minutes. Uh, number seven. Describe a situation that you feel demonstrates your integrity and ethical standards.
The, well, integrity is one of the things I, I hold most, uh, most dear, um, I, I'm most proud of it. I, I'm one of, currently one of the scout leaders, my son's true and it's. That's something that I try to practice in that regard. With work, you know, the, the situation I was just describing, uh, doing the right thing, there's. You know, it's hard to narrow down one example, um, but there's, a- anytime I have to tell, tell the council something that. Or any council member that they may not like, there may not be, they may not like the answer, they may not like the. The decision of the rest of the council. If, if it's the right thing to do, it needs to be done. And it's, it's not necessarily a cavalier, like, well, I'm just gonna do the right thing and, you know, whatever happens, happens. Um, but I wouldn't be able to sleep at night, you know, if I didn't do the right thing. Um. Trying to think of another recent example, um, the. I mean, I would say the, the, there, there was one, one time when the, uh. I, the, the staff was being criticized for, uh. Not, not doing things legally. Um, but it wasn't, it was unethical, just because it was legal, it doesn't mean it was right. And what, what was happening was, it was a. Part of a purchase, a, a land purchase and we had had multiple city council meetings. Um, up to that point, workshops uh for over a year and there was one council member who was, you know. Had, had someone come, you know, tried to gin up support or opposition, I guess, at the council meeting. And I had to, you know, I had to explain to the public and to the council, which I luckily have not had to do. We, we've had a very stable council, um, over the years, so it's, these are, these are exceptions. Um, but staff was criticized for not doing their job. And I had to, I had to support staff, I had to support myself as well and stand up for myself. Uh, because we did everything by the book, we did everything we were supposed to, um, we actually went beyond what we were supposed to. Um, and what was being, what staff was being accused of was not accurate. Um, and that again was not easy, um, but I, I believe it was the right thing to do and it. I, I think that the council member who took issue with it at the time did respect me more after because I. I stood up for myself and staff, um, because it was the right thing, so that integrity was critical.
All right.
All right. What have you done in your current position or previous positions that made a significant difference to the organization?
Um, well, one of the things that I've done since I've been in Bayport is the, the long-term planning, strategic planning, uh. I won't labor that too much. The, when I, when I got to Bayport, we had a CIP, a five-year CIP. Half of it had been on there ten, fifteen years, just kept getting hunted or pushed out. Um, it was never being executed. Uh, there really was no infrastructure planning, uh, and same with our fire department. Uh, there really was no infrastructure planning, uh, and same with our fire department, uh, we, we had a new chief right before I started, and he and I created a, a thirty-five-year equipment, you know, fire replacement, uh, schedule. Um, so that, implementing that and then executing it, you know, and explaining to the council, this item needs to be done, you know, it's, it's a guide, it's a plan. If things change, that's okay, but we can't just keep pushing it off, because these things are gonna fill up, and the public, you know, it's, it's the right thing to do. Um, so executing it, that's one of the things that has had a, a major impact that the council, I know, greatly appreciates. Um, the other thing is the budgeting, uh, the budgeting had not been very tight the last, um, prior to my arrival, and so there was we had, we have a utility, uh, you know, enterprise fund, and some of the operational funds, the general fund dollars were kind of being buried in the, the enterprise funds. Well, the public works night director and I really made it a point to shift those back where they should be in the, the general fund. Um, and that, uh, that has an impact on, on the, the city's finances, both for the general fund and the enterprise, but um, so some of the financial advancements that I've made as well as the long-term planning.
Good.
Number nine, if you are hired for this position and are still with the organization five years from now, how do you think the organization will be different?
Um, that, that's an interesting question. I think, obviously, there, there may be staff changes, but I'll have my, not, not necessarily because of me, just because of the, the staff will be different. Um, guessing just with the way that all, um, organizations, there'll be you know, the, the generational change, um, I don't know, one of the things that I was talking about, the, the staff panels, that they were, you know, they're looking, uh, to have more of a, more of a cohesive team. So that's one of the things that I'd like to, that, that I talked about in the last panel was um, really bring the, the department heads together, the leadership team, and, you know, get to know them, um, that's one of the things that they, they had said that they would really like, um, is it's fine, we keep talking about trust, but, you know, everybody, instead of styling up, you know, have more bonding, uh, team bonding, team building, um, cohesive team. Uh, because I think that, I think you, when you have that established, I think you can operate at a higher, higher rate. Um, you can be more productive when you can trust people, and you know, and you know people better. You don't have to be best friends, but, you know, know the, the, the person that they are. Um, I, I think obviously Crystal's gonna be, you know, it, it's gonna be different, it's, you know, and you have the blue line, you're gonna have, you know, there may be additional police officers that are needed, you know, there's, there's gonna be little aspects such as that, you know, operationally. Um, but I, I would think that the organization, I would hope that, I know the, the, the council's kind of policy is to, you know, to maintain its financial stability, um, not issue, you know, not take on debt, not have assessments. Um, so I would hope, you know, that the, that plan can be implemented and be financially sound, you know, well, financially sound into the future, um, so that would be, that would be my goal, um, as I imagine the council would be. Yeah, I, I would say that, I, I haven't heard anything bad about, I, I'm very picky of where I even have been, wanted to apply, uh, Crystal's the only place I've applied for the city manager position. Um, but I would like to think that the culture is even better than it is now. So probably the biggest thing, just, uh, and wanting to do more, you know, why, you talked about the engagement earlier. Um, sometimes it's hard to make that change, where traditionally you haven't been doing those things, and I know Crystal, Crystal's been doing pretty well, I based on what I've seen, um, in reaching out to the public, but just even more and having that be the expectation. Um, where, instead of the exception, I guess, be a, um, robot for the cities.
Thank you. And this would be question number ten. Provide an example of how you have been a change agent in your organization.
Um, changing, I mean, I think i- it's interesting with being a city administrator, city manager. You know, every, every chief administrative officer does things a little bit different, um, and, and councils change. And so that's, that's, there's always that dynamic, uh, but some of the things, you know, the first, when I, the last job, when I came to Bayport, first six months, it was, you know, I need to learn about the city, need to learn about the council, you know, the, the staff, um, learn about all the, you know, the first hole onboarding and get familiar with it. I wasn't looking to make any changes right out of the gate. Um, and I explained that to the, the council here, that's kind of my approach, get to know, get to know things, um. You know, that's, the, the disadvantage of being an external candidate is you're not familiar with the, the inside, you know, behind the curtain. But that also can, you know, raise a new fresh set of eyes, um, and that was one of my complaints with why are we doing it this way? Well, that's where we've always done it. Well, okay, but is it, is that the best way? You know, I don't, I'm not, if you saw my profile, I don't want to do change just to make change. But I'll, I want to analyze everything to make sure that it's the most efficient, most effective, you know, most cost-effective. Um, if there's a better way, if there's, you know, more fun way, if there's, you know, so I, I like to analyze processes. Um, and so I did that in Bayport, and I know the staff got tired of me, Sarah Deitch, she, she actually started city government working for Crystal, um, so, uh, she's our current assistant administrator and planner. Um, she, I drove her nuts the first six months, asking her, why do we do it this way? Well, it's because we really did it. Why do we do this? Why do we do this? But the reason I ask that is because I want to know if it's the best way to do it, you know, because, and if it is, great, let's keep doing it. If it's not, let's look at what other options there are to do it, and make, circle back, it'll do it, but we gotta go through that process. So I, I do that everywhere I go.
Thank you. And question number ten, eleven, is provide an example of a time when you were proactive in solving a small problem before it turned into a major problem.
That, that is important, um, all too often, government is well, it's naturally reactive, um, so if you can get in front of something ahead of time, you are saving a lot of headache. Um, something recent or something that I've done, I would say that, uh, well, communications, um, some of the, some of the, one of the most recent examples is the state prison, there's a city street that runs through it, um, between the, the warden's house, there, the, the prison's parking lot, and then the actual prison. We, the state had contacted the city to vacate it, and what this would do, there were about twenty houses south of the prison on this same street that would not be vacated, obviously, um, and we weren't even required to notify them, because they're not within the adjacent area. But I said, we are gonna contact them before we even deal with the state, you know, we had our first meeting with the state, but before we even go down this path, we need to get their feedback, and it was, it was about seventy-five percent initially, were, in fact, they thought it was fine. Um, we, we, we don't have, actually, then we, we found out who the people who may have issues with it. Our police chief went and talked to them, I talked to them, had several communications, and now they understand the benefit, and it actually doesn't, wouldn't be an inconvenience for them, like, they thought, they thought they had to go all the way around the block. Yeah, so taking the being proactive in that case could save a lot of headache instead of the, by the, the law, well, you know, two weeks before the public hearing for the vacation, they get something in the mail. What, you're closing off my street? So trying to, trying to remember to do those types of things can maybe give the council and the city and staff a lot of headache.
Okay, question twelve, uh, why should the Crystal City Council select you as their next city manager?
Um, one, I think, the, as, as I said, I, I hold integrity and uh, trust as so vital and so critical, that's something that I every day try to practice, it's, I you're gonna have to take my word on it, but I would hope to have the opportunity to actually demonstrate that. Uh, two, I, I would be an outside set of eyes, um, I, I believe that I have the skills, I have the experience in my past jobs that I think, um, I, I think I can lead the, the city, Crystal. Um, I work very well with all levels of government, I, I worked out in Washington DC for a congressperson. I'm sorry, I've worked at the federal, I work, we work with the state, I've I've had several people, um, once they found out about this, me being a finalist, contact me, um, Washington County Commissioner. Wishing that I wouldn't go, or wish me, you know, shooting a lot, um, so I, I have, I built a very good rapport, even like Elmo. I had, before I left, I had one half, the, the council members who were not wanting to, you know, wanting to give her the current administrator, um, say, they want, they want me to take that spot, and I tried to stay on that, but I, it's because I built the rapport and the trust, I always did my job, and so I, that's something that I, I can bring here, and that goes with the public as well, um, and I'm always honest, I may be two candidate times, but I, I, I'm also a lawyer, so I try to protect, you know, we don't assume any liability or increase it, um, but that, the, between those two things, I think, uh, I, I would create something different, or not different, but something special and unique, um, and I'm, I'm eager. I, I, I'm not from here, I'm ready for my next opportunity, I'm ready to work with the council to, to do something exciting, you know, I know Crystal has things on the, on the horizon that are coming, um, as well as opportunities for redevelopment, and, you know, maintaining that Bayport is a community feeling as well, and that's one of the things that I value about, or that I liked about Crystal, I was looking for somewhere to move to is I'm not looking to go to just a big city, I mean, I, I lived, I've lived in Plymouth, you know, but like I said, my first house is in Robbinsdale, the small-town field, small-town community, I'm from a small town, grew up in Pelican Rapids, Minnesota, um, by central two thousand people. So that, I, I'm, I'm excited, I, I think I have the experience, and I, uh, I think I would, I could work really well with.
Alright, we have about one minute left.
Sorry.
So you have one question that you can ask of us.
One, one question for me to ask?
Yeah, the, the question is, do you have any questions for us? We only have time for one.
Okay, um, what, what would you say is the biggest challenge for Crystal right now? Ooh.
I'll take that, I, I, I think the, uh, Blue Land Extension from downtown Minneapolis to six-ten goes through the north part of the crystal along eighty-one, that's the biggest challenge I see.
And, and the challenge in, obviously, it faces, poses multiple challenges.
Multiple challenges, it's been kicking around now for ten years, um, route was chosen and the missing component of that was getting, uh, Burlington Northern San, Santa Fe onboard about a year and a half ago, that council pivoted and chose a new route, and there went a hundred thousand dollars in design, um, it's been controversial, I know every project of this magnitude is controversial, but sitting along here, we don't all agree on how that will look for Crystal, and it's coming, I mean, it's, it's inevitable, so the shape that, you know, and push that along, I think is, is challenging, uh, is a, is a big deal. It's, as, uh, John Sutter said, it's a hundred-year decision that we're making, you know, so.
Yeah, I, I think of, um, I think of
another big challenge in Crystal is development, how do we get uh, someone energized to help us really sell Crystal for redevelopment, uh, we have some tired places that really do need that, and we need to do a better job at it. And it's gonna have to be staff-driven, I mean, really, I mean, we can do what we can do, um, i- i- in you know, we, we've talked about even in recent council meetings, that there's kind of a a divergence in maybe some of our philosophy in making that happen faster, so what we really need is to be very upfront and, and have somebody that has the ability to move it forward, even despite some of our maybe you can call them self-inflicted handicaps for moving forward. Does that fit?
I, I, I think that actually, both of them.
Yeah.
Those are the two big things.
Yeah. So, alright, anybody else want anything to add to that question?
Nope, alright, alright, we are done, your time is up, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You, Adam. Appreciate it.
Good luck.
Appreciate, yeah.
Thanks.
It's a lot harder.
It's harder.
Which? Just doing the interviews, that's like.
They're always tough, you know.
I'm such a, but I'm such an active person, it's.
You mean you can't do so?
Yes, this is a drain on me. Alright, there, I said it, yes.
Yeah, it really is, you know, that's a challenge for council members, we all bring our own experiences and they're so very different, and they may or may not fit with the situation we're in. True. Alright, um. I think what we'll do is we'll, uh, continue once again, and then, uh, we'll be coming back together.
So I have an eight-hour window, and then sixteen, or not even.
Oh, okay, okay, that's right.
Yep, it's seven thirty. Matt's got us recording. Um, at this time, I'd like to bring the city council back to order. Um, we have taken some time and reviewed some of staff's comments, and we're now to the next section, uh, Mark, did you want to cover what our next steps would be?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, in few moments, here, on request, if we could have each one of you wish to make a few comments about the interviews. I thought we could just go down in a reverse order from last time, with the, they're going last. If you just wanna, if you don't wish to say anything, that's fine, but just if anybody wanted to make a comment, you, as part of your deliberation process. And then if the council so chooses to have consensus, we'd be looking for a recommended motion that's in the agenda. After the meeting is over and adjourned, we'll be looking for two members to serve on the motion team. And so, uh, I'm thinking about who'd be interested in that, and we could work for myself and them on putting together an employment agreement, and I'd be staying after the meeting is over with. I'm not sure how you wish to make that decision, if there's volunteers or the mayor, or somebody wished to appoint two members for a negotiation. Um, so far, through this process that started many months ago and culminating this evening, uh, you have received the following information, received the candidate's cover letter, their resume, information disclosures, their work person, personality index report, their intellectual profile. You seen information on the references, information on background checks, they also seen their video interview. And then just most recently, the staff feedback forms, and finally, it was followed up with, uh, interviews with each one of the candidates, three candidates in a live, um, city council formal interview process. Unless anybody has any questions for myself on where we go from here, I guess maybe a time to hear from you and your thoughts, and if you wish to bring anything forward prior to a deliberation and, and hopefully, uh, consensus towards a motion. Is everyone okay with the process?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Parsons, I guess you're, you're up.
Um, I will pass, I'm just still formulating my thoughts.
Okay, already, Councilmember LaRush?
I will be the same, I'm still no, I was furiously writing as you were talking, still
Okay.
consolidating as well, thank you.
Alrighty. Councilmember Kaiser, what do you wish?
Um, I want to start by thanking you, you've made this process, I wouldn't say easy, but we were informed along the way, and the information coming, you know, has been great, I'm not sure what am I supposed to say, if I hesitations by a particular candidate, or?
Whatever you wish, or otherwise, we can also, another way of doing this would be, if somebody made a motion in a second, and then you have a discussion at that time. But I found sometimes councils like to have a little bit of discussion about how they feel about the candidates and
Um, well, I, I learned a lot tonight, um, what I think is most striking is that the, the feedback from staff, I'm like, did they get together and write these? There was a, a lot of similarities about different candidates that several different staff had, I thought that was interesting, um. I guess I have an idea of where I want this to go, and I'm not sure where we where we're, we're at, or if, if, or one, if you want us to, to tell you what hesitations we have about particular candidates, or?
I guess whatever you wish, this is the opportunity to have a discussion, I guess, so whatever you feel comfortable with, you know.
Um, I guess I'm gonna, um, wish I would have gone Olga and Nancy's route. Down this path here, so, um, I do have some concerns, I, I do have a lot of positive things about. So um I do have some concerns, I I do have a lot of positive things about each of the candidates, um I'm just not ready to be the first one to.
Okay, well, uh once again, thank you for uh all the work you've done, the weekly updates have been fantastic and uh it's a. Lot of, uh we mentioned earlier, a lot of time went into this, I don't, I don't want to count the hours I spent, you know, Saturday, Sunday, at this, but. Coming into it for me, experience was super important, so uh as I've gone through this, um I kinda had an idea of who I wanted today, it was kinda um looking at it. You know, looking at all the candidates, um but for me, Adam Bell was the one that really struck out with the experience, um he interviewed really well, he had a. Depth of knowledge, a lot of attention to detail, um it really sealed it for me was the staff comments, it was like near universal in their approval and um. Kind of talking about his experience, talking about how he'd fit well, he has a understanding, so that really jived with me, um. He talked about, you know, issues he's faced that, you know, you're that might come up or, you know, things that he's dealt with that I thought was was really, really good. Um I guess my only one thought was, um someone, the staff made a comment that he could be a little long, uh little long winded and saw that in the interview, but I thought. You know, that's something he will figure out in the council meeting, but that was probably my only knock, but he was my clear winner, I just with experience, with staff comments. Um with kinda interacting with him uh in our interview, I just, that's the one person I felt the most confident with.
Councilmember Banks?
Yep, um hey, oh, again, I reiterate everybody else, thank you for for everything, it that um. It was, it was a good choice with you and and as far as you helping kinda usher us through this process. Um and it gives us the confidence to be able to kind of, you know, I feel confident with all three candidates, so. It it's made it very difficult kind of for me at at this point, um and and I, I think especially looking at this uh interview rating form, it kinda. Helps give me a, takes me out of myself and kinda, okay, when I put this down, I try to put points on here and and look at. How would I rank somebody or or do something like that, um. Which was hard because then I had to, I'm like, oh, what happens when you get two people with the same score? Um I I try to be, you know, um an an objective person, but um. I think all three candidates were are, you know. I want to say this is an easy decision, I think this is 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 a difficult decision in a good way that I believe all three. Could would be successful at at city manager, um and so. At the, my people pleasing aspect, you know, and there comes in and and it says, um. Not picking one of the, one of, you know, not picking one of the other two would be a negative mark on them. And um and and I don't think that as such, from my perspective, and I've had the. Ability to interview a lot of different people and work with a lot of people in different, different professions and and backgrounds, um. And so I think the person that I would say that I think would be the best fit for. Um many different reasons and and it was, I think it was really, really hard, um would be. Is that actually Aaron, I can't say his last name, but it's obviously, that wasn't a marketer, is it? Quaker, is everybody, okay, alright, I'm really big on that because people always mispronounce my first name. Um that, it would, that's my, that's who I went with as my my first choice and. Um and some of the things that that stood out and I really, like again, as we usher into this new era of. Um where we're going is with Crystal is somebody that's able to. Take the, you know, the the team and and be, you know, very, very cohesive, maybe that's probably also, I saw a lot of my own similar things in there, but just even. From how I, how I scored it, um Adam, Adam Bell's very, like, that was, like, it was, like, really hard, I would, I would almost want to flip a coin, but I'd say there. Um that's definitely my, you know, my, but Aaron is my number one. So kinda as far as where I'm at, but I think they all interviewed uh really well, the, you know, the information that you provided, um. And all the things is, it's a, it's a lot, but it was good, I think that that's important.
I have also a question, so I I, the rating does help, Brandon, like. Um kinda quantified my feelings about how how the process went, I am what I saw, um it doesn't have. The rating sheet doesn't have staff report as 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 a consideration, so to me, that kinda throws, the the rating sheet just kinda is thrown off. Cause then, you know, um. If I rate, you know, before having that input, then I have a clear choice, if I rate. Taking that input into consideration, my choices are blown off, um so. So I'm I'm processing that right now, kinda struggling with that, um. You know, that additional piece of information that is 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 very significant, um. So I don't know what the feeling is for anyone about that. All that, you know, the rating sheet is is not gonna be relevant to me. So.
And and definitely the rating sheet is 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 the guide, you know.
Okay, right, and and it's.
But it is, I just hopefully to help collect thoughts and. Just that one more piece of information.
I want a quantifiable, like. Number thing.
Absolutely.
Just to, just to backtrack on earlier research, the personality and intelligence profiles are also something that. Might be helpful to revisit as well, yeah, uh because some of those numbers are very telling. Um and that's also a fact, right, or my decision right now, which is why I'm throwing papers around and scribbling furiously, you know, trying to formulate. But thank you very much, Mark, for all you've done. Here comes that static.
Chrissy, cause she's making a face of concern.
Talk to John at all?
Absolutely, I didn't mean to, I just started from the interview.
I don't know, were you? Did you experience the injuries, because you have that, I don't know to what extent then you would have the.
Well, I guess you had a chance to see the the staff stuff.
Yeah, the staff reports pretty much reaffirmed what I felt about candidates, so, because. You know, in this case, I would also select Adam Bell as well, so. Based on comparing his experience, his education and his ability to do the job, I feel he's the, he's the top can.
Think everybody had, I know, that's my LaRoche, you're still. Rubbing it in there and.
Um, I I agree with with Brendan, but Adam Bell is my first choice and Aaron is the second. Post second, first, Adam would be my first.
Yeah, that's my total right now, too. I I've just.
Absolutely, and we're, yeah, we have all the time to do this.
Okay, thank you.
Don't wanna rush anybody, right, Mayor Adams?
Sure, I'd love to make some comments, um. You know, thank you, thank you for your process, I know I I had uh. Had some misgivings with a lot of the processes of the timetable that it would take and. I gotta tell you, I'm I'm so pleasantly surprised with the level and the depth of. Of the work that you've done has helped making the decision, sometimes I felt like I had whiplash. But you know, as as a new piece of information came, all of a sudden, everything shifted, it was like puzzle pieces, just moving like that. And and that happened at every s- stage of the way and it was really interesting to see those. Um those reports come out and either affirm or um. Contradict what my perceptions were, so you know, it was a, it really was a process of of trying to deal with. Your own biases and and try to deal with the people you think you know and and all that kinda stuff, so um. I I I was thoroughly impressed, um and I'm really grateful we went with you, I think you did a fantastic job. And and with that, uh, you know. These candidates ha- have gone through quite a bit to get to this point and. You know, just just for the record, I want them to know that I thank them for putting themselves out there in the public and taking the professional risk. To to serve in the capacity of the city manager and and that's a lot of courage and I really thank them for that. In in terms of 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 where my preferences are, um. I I think the the best fit for, well, before I say that, I'm sorry, um. I, as we go through this process, I mean, we have, uh we have quite a diverse. I don't know what we call opinions here, in so many times when it gets to be really important, we've come together and we've made a good decision. Where we've, we've been able to come together for the benefit of the city of Crystal and I'm really hoping that we have that today. I guess my top choice for for today, uh for for numerous reasons is is Adam Bell. Um I think he is the the proper choice, I think he's going to be the person that uh the council can get behind, the staff can get behind. And I think, uh I think despite the strengths of the other gentleman, there are things that I absolutely love about. You know, Aaron, I love that team, that that coach mentality, you know, we're gonna get this done. I think, I absolutely love that about him, Mark, um I absolutely love the fact that that he goes. And does things that are out of the box, is enthusiastic, I absolutely love that about him, um Adam, I think has. Has the ability to step onto this, this uh called stage, the city. And actually perform it, um and highlight what he has inside of him, I think he'll be able to flourish here. I think he'll be able to grow here, I do think he's gonna be able to help us in a lot of the things we're trying to accomplish, so um. That's, that's where I, that's where my thoughts are. And anybody else?
I just, this has been a really fascinating process, um. Just the the different aspects that each individual brings forward and how you have to. Eliminating, like Brandon said, eliminating someone doesn't mean that you're. Can't, like, they're canceling them, like, they're, they're just not qual, it's just, it's like different facets, different angles that. Are um just fit better into this puzzle piece that we have. Um and and I've been surprised by this process as well, where I have arrived at, um. And um so, and and you you've managed it just phenomenally, um I just can't even, you know, this journey has been. Really remarkable, uh so. Um yeah, so I I I, my gut feeling is with Adam Bell as well, so I think we. I don't know, you know, having a a such a unanimous, nearly, I know, Brandon, you you mentioned a a different, a different. Preference, but we're, I think this is, having this decision be so close to unanimity is is really. Um, uh, very, very remarkable, surprising.
I think, I think for the record, this is the first time where I've been alone, well.
Can you bring this on board to you? Coin, so.
No, I, uh if if I may, uh Mayor.
Go ahead, Brendan.
I um, it's not, I I'm not in a a position of where, like, where I would say that I would oppose Adam Bell. Um like I said, I think for me, that those two are the, I mean, they, they were essentially a tie, you know, for me, and I think both of them. All three, like I said, would would, I would be successful and I think would would be good. Um here, but after kinda going through everything and then just kinda putting it all together and I just, and I had to. Make decisions on how would you, you know, how would each uh of the three fit, like I said, I mean. Aaron was just end up being my number one pick and I think that that's just, that's says this, cause I I I mean, I think independently. Um even though people don't think that, um sorry, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know where that came from, um I um. But I don't have a problem, so I I think that Adam Bell would be, would be great as well and I don't have a problem supporting.
Nancy?
Yeah, I I didn't speak a lot, I just said, hey, same, uh but I just wanted to add my feelings about uh my first pick with Adam after doing all these numbers and. Uh just going through all of the packets, which thank you again for all of these inventories and. Uh the studies, it just, he, in my opinion, after everything, including staff, cause I I think of it, we work with our city manager. A few times a month, staff is working with them on a daily basis and those, you know, those relationships are key as well, so that factored. You know, those uh other feedbacks have really helped solidify my first choice for Adam Bell.
What one of the first questions that a candidate will ask is what was the vote? It is appreciative that to be able to hear these comments, I think, I think that goes a long way for the next administrator or manager coming in.
Yeah, I mean, so, Theresa, you had a comment?
I was, are we ready for a motion?
Let's make sure everybody's got. Comments, so.
Well, we we're all in agreement, so we can keep discussing this and basking and.
Enjoying one of these great, yeah, they're they're, everybody's getting along, we're great, and that, and I think, let me say for the record, it is, I. I'm I'm loose tonight, um I I know, I think we do work really well together and I I just wanna reiterate. Um I have, for the record, that um I don't, I think that all of us have taken, you know, understood the weight. And gravity of um of this decision and kinda going through the process, again, Mark, thank you for like helping that. Um helping us usher through this, that was huge, there it really was, but I and I think that. Time will tell ultimately, right, but I think even with the process, it it speaks, I mean, it was, I mean. It's pretty much unanimous, I mean, like I said, I'm not, I'm not objecting, it was a very close, you know, call, right? Um but all three candidates were good, but then coming and having kind of a clear front runner out of the three. Is uh that says a lot about the system, um and I I think it also still, even with all of our differences of opinion. It still says a lot of what we think about, you know, the city, um and and kinda the direction that we're going and even even with what the staff is.
Yeah, well said, anyone else? Theresa?
Make a motion that we, I don't know how to word the motion, so. Okay, DDA resources. I'm gonna make a motion that we make an offer to Adam Bell, about that. And negotiate the term, oh, and and negotiate the terms of employment with the city of Crystal or with Adam Bell or. My point across.
Alright, looking for a second, go ahead, John.
I second that motion.
Alright, all members in favor, please say aye. Motion carries, congratulations, John.
I actually told my husband we'd be here until midnight, so.
I was really prepared to be here for a long time.
We're not quite done.
I know, I know.
We've seen two volunteers, we will in the work on the negotiation committee with myself and Tim will be helping us out also.
Any volunteers?
I'll do it.
Theresa?
You guys can, he may be here till midnight, because we do need to stay afterwards. Meet afterwards, we'd sure appreciate that.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Alright.
We need you to let him know, are you calling people tonight?
Yes, I'll be calling all three of them tonight and what I do tell the, we anticipate everything will work just fine with Mr. Bell. But it is really contingent upon the final employment agreement that we'll have, so I do tell the other two, yeah, I'm thanking them and I'll. Say, I'm sure you will listen to the media and listen to all the great comments that they did here, because I could never articulate it better, what you had to say about all three of the candidates. And and I mean, it was very authentic and genuine and I know they will appreciate it. But I'll let them know that I will get back to them once the employment agreement is is ratified by by the city council, so. Don't anticipate any issues, but it won't really be final until the employment agreement comes back to you at a future meeting and then voted on and become official. So, I don't want, I don't want to give the other two a false carrot, but also just wanna let them know what the process is, but yes, I'll be contacting. Very shortly, in the car, actually.
And you collect these from us?
Yeah, I'll take whatever information, or you actually give them to Kim if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Any information that you have.
You don't, we don't.
You don't need this, right?
I mean.
No, okay.
You don't need it?
Alright, looking for a motion? We got John? I don't even know who that was.
Nancy by a second.
All members in favor, please say aye. Thank you, I wanna thank you guys very much.